Good morning, good afternoon. Twice I did that today. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. It is Monday, June 9th, 2025. It's 1:01 PM. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of the Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we take a moment of silence. This is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you very much. We gather today for this important budget meeting. We will start off with a review of our, the constitutional budgets by our finance team. And then we will have the clerk of the court first. We had a request to move the sheriff up to second. Is the sheriff agreeable to that? Is everybody agreeable with that change? Okay.
If the property appraiser wants to protest that. Nobody care.
So be it.
Followed by the property appraiser, unless we boot him to the bottom. And then the supervisor of elections, our tax collector, will close us out. So with that, I'll turn that over to, for the constitutional budget presentation.
Brian Egunger, Financial Services. So I'm going to go through a couple of slides. And then obviously, we have the important people to talk about their budgets. So mine's going to be a real high-level overview. And if you have questions, obviously, each constitutional officer is here. So constitutional budget requests, we have one from each one. The proposed cost of living adjustment was 4%. We're going to go through detailed budgets and go through the decision units, if they had any. So the first slide is kind of just putting everybody on the board. All constitutionals plus us. Our part is just showing our operating, not the reserve part. Give you guys a second to take that in. We'll note the tax collector estimated. They are a fee-based officer, so we pay them commissions. While they do do a budget, it's due to DOR on August 1st. But we are only concerned about how much we have to pay them for them collecting our taxes.
I'm sorry, Brian. Could you say that one more time, maybe a little bit louder and maybe a little bit slower?
Okay.
Something about the tax collector.
So the tax collector, we give them money based on commission. Every dollar they bring in, we have to pay them a percentage. So they could have, the budget they're going to provide to Department of Revenue is important, but it doesn't necessarily affect what we end up paying the tax collector.
Everybody good to go on? Okay.
So first up, we have the clerk of the courts and comptroller. Large increase in operating. They do earn their own revenues. You see that as a reduction on there. But a reduction in this case is going up, so it's good.
So this chart came from this chart?
Yes.
So everyone projected and gave us a detailed chart, budget.
Correct.
Whatever format they wanted to use, they presented it.
Correct.
And it was due here, June 1st.
Correct.
Okay. And then you're using this and putting it in your own format.
Correct.
Thank you.
Everybody ready to move?
I mean, I don't see the numbers matching. Clerk of court. Adopted 2425. Oh, there, no, 4376950. Oh, personnel, you broke it down. Okay. Employees, four, there it is. Operating, there it is. And expenses, okay, thank you.
Some budget highlights. So FY '24 version, also known as excess fees, $283,000. Clerk's revenues continue to stabilize after COVID. They are asking for some additional FTEs and to bring their starting salary up to $20 an hour, which is year two of that implementation.
Do they list the additional positions? Or are they required to list the five additional positions?
They're not required to list, but obviously, you can ask for more detail. I believe the letter just listed the divisions that they were in. Yeah, divisions.
What's the current starting pay prior to this? $18 an hour? Thank you.
Is this still our provision?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll wait till the clerk.
Next up, supervisor of elections. Pretty small increase. This is going to be a cyclical thing with elections, so.
And this is not the time to talk about capital? Any type of funding reserved for a future building or renovations to the current building?
You can talk about anything you want to. It wasn't planned.
But this is not where we allocate it?
Correct, yeah. That would be in the B O C C's budget, not what we give the supervisor of elections. Budget highlights, excess fees of $157,000. Like I said, they don't have an election this year, so you're seeing it going down. They do have new website vendor and some software and equipment increases. Next up, the property appraiser. Their big increase on the board shows a non-operating, but it is a relatively small amount. Just percentage large. And then they do get a portion of their revenue, or their budgets paid by other entities like St. John's River Water Management District.
Does that include a fine as well?
Yes.
Tiny amount of fine.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay. Excess fees of $179,000. And they submit their budget to the Department of Revenue. And we wait to hear back from that. Tax collector, as I mentioned earlier, this is just an estimate based on what we expect to bring in in terms of avalorum, which we will pay commission on. The tax collector provides their budget to the Department of Revenue by August 1st every year. They're really not in control of the number you see. It's how we set the mileage and what our property values are. Okay. Tax collector provided almost $1.2 million in excess fees last year. Again, everything that I just mentioned on there again. Now we start with the sheriff. So they'll be broken down into three pieces. This is court bailiffs. Pretty small increase to personnel. Next is inmate. Large increase in operating. Law enforcement. This option is also, I believe, option two, where we kept the dispatchers, just so you guys know. And then law enforcement obviously includes service contracts and other revenue. So you're seeing that as a reduction to the B O C C.
So the debt principal interest on this budget is the sheriff's operation center?
No, I would assume it's vehicles.
Vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
So this stays with them, but the building stays with us?
Correct. Yeah. Then that's just rolling them all up together onto one summary, so you can see it. Excess fees last year, $153,000. Like I said, it's presenting the option that doesn't include transferring dispatch to the B O C C. Asking for some new deputies, with three of them coming from us and nine from home coast. And that's the end for me. Obviously, they're here to give you more detail and answer any questions. Our next workshop is scheduled for the 16th, where we'll talk about the general fund. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes?
My question before we start talking about each one is for our attorney. Can I ask, please?
Sure.
Okay. Sean, we are elected officials. Our constitutionals are elected officials. As the holder of the funds, of the avalorum funds that come through our coffers, budget process, what constitution, what statutorily am I required to do as a sitting commissioner with regard to their budgets? So they prepare it, they present it. What can I and what can I not do as a sitting commissioner for the B O C C?
Commissioner, you set their budget, you approve their budget. So what they're presenting to you is a request. But it is within the county commissioners' purview to make the final say on the allocations of the funds. We obviously do have to fund their, their offices so they can operate. But you have wide discretion in, in setting those budgets.
Down to the line item? Or, or just an overall, this is too high, you need to come down?
They have the, it's a mixed answer. So they present it to you with certain line items. But once it's approved, they, they do have the ability to move things around at the object level within their own budgets without coming back to you for that approval. So they present to you those line items, so you can get a picture of what they need. But it doesn't mean they're locked in. They can, once it's approved, they can shift funds around as they need to do to conduct their operations.
And then throughout the year, are they required to provide budget updates or budget reviews? Or do I just ask for that through, through Brian? Or do we just?
Brian might help me answer that one a little better. Normally, there's, there's not much that comes back to you once the, once the budget's in place, unless they were to need some type of increase, some sort of an emergency or unexpected situation.
So if they get grants or something like that, don't we, do we not see all their grants? Or if money is transferred in or transferred mostly in because of a grant? Do we not see that?
So it would depend on how the grant comes in. So there are, I think, two JAG grants that the sheriff's office gets that they aren't allowed to, they have to ask us to go get them because the B O C C has to get it, but they will ultimately end up expending it. So it just really depends on the type and complexity of the grants.
But we don't know what they're working on. So we don't know if there are any types of funds out there at the state level or at the professional level, unless we just don't know that ahead of time.
Correct.
Absolutely. Good questions. So clarification moving forward. Do each constitutional have a separate presentation? Or are we just using?
I don't believe they all have it, so the ones that do, obviously.
Okay.
And then if you have a question.
Guys, they come up, okay. Can you just stick with your, the summary page on the screen? No, the spreadsheet. Yep, there you go. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our first itemized presentation. It will be from the clerk of the court.
Good afternoon. Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller. May I present from here in the clerk's pit over here? Dana's going to help me with my presentation. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And it's a pleasure to present to you five commissioners, two that are new. And I'm so excited about having you guys on the commission. The three-two lady manpower thing, I like that. That's really cool. So today, I am prepared to talk to you in great detail about the clerk and comptroller's 2425 proposed county budget. Frankly, I don't often give a big elaborate presentation, but there are a couple of things that came up this year that have caused me to do so. And it's the two new commissioners and having the respect for them to actually talk about what our office does and how we operate, as well as the, the gravity of the size of the increase that we're asking for this year. I don't, I do not take that lightly. I am not, I do not intend on being willy-nilly about how I talk about it. And I think you're going to see how the ends are going to justify the means here. So with that, our first slide. There you go. Article 5, Section 16 of the Florida Constitution basically tells us what to do. It gives us a very high outline of our duties. It establishes us as clerk of the Circuit Court and the county courts. The ex-fiscio clerk of the Board of County Commissioners, which is what the five of you probably see from the most of us. We are the auditor to the Board of County Commissioners and responsible for the county-wide audited financialism, working with your auditor every year. We are the county recorder and the keeper of the official records. We are also your comptroller, which makes us the custodian of all county funds, your accountant, the investor of all your excess funds. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware, we generate significant, I should say, the market generates significant proceeds from these investments that we invest on your behalf. And we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more later in the, the presentation. Florida Statute 12903-2. This statute directs us to submit our county budget to you by June 1st each year, which is what we did, and we do that every year. This budget will support our office that currently has 62 employees, 37 of which are non-court related. And those are the ones that we will be discussing today. What is a needs-based budget? Seems pretty obvious. This is the minimum budget necessary to conduct business and serve you, the Board of County Commissioners, and our combined constituents, which are all one and the same. I have worked diligently with my senior leadership team, which, three of them are in the building today, over the past several months. It took us months to craft this needs-based budget that I'm presenting to you today. There is absolutely zero fat, not one dime in this budget today. The next few slides are going to outline the criteria that I, we use to formulate the minimum budget that will fund the increases need, the needs of the county and my office's response to those needs. So just to go back to the beginning of this whole process, and you guys do this every year. Financial services, Brian Egunger. And thank you, Brian, for laying out the budgets for everybody in the beginning. Sends us a letter outlining kind of your basic guidance, where we should start. And that consists of a 4% COLA increase, changes to state statutory FRS retirement rates, and an increase to the employer contribution for health insurance. Your guidance that you put in that letter to us made a further suggestion. And it said that we should concentrate on retention. And that is exactly what we did. We are in year two of a base pay increase that will better align us and make us more equal with our fellow partners in government, achieving that equality and acting as a tool of retention that you basically instructed us to work on. And then also making us more attractive to potential new hires. People come to government for a myriad of different reasons, but pay doesn't tend to be the driver because the open free market can pay more than we can. Our benefits packages are, are very compelling, though. And combined with this two-year movement to get the $20 an hour, I think this will put us in a much better posture whenever we're out there in the open market and when we're competing with the other departments and constitutional officers that are in this room right now. We are in unprecedented times, commissioners. Increases in population and the coinciding need have finally caught up to us. All of our positions in our office are filled for the first time in decades, and we are still understaffed. Additionally, we have this, I'm not sure if you knew this. I didn't know this till the other day. We have the same amount of employees as we did 18 years ago. I mean, how do you, how do you do that? Well, we found some way to make it happen, but like I said, time has caught up with us. 18 years ago, our population was 95,000 people. Today, it's 137,000. If we did an FTE increase based upon that increase, we would need 15 new employees today. Board, you guys are busy. You are the busiest you have ever been since back in the beginning when we were establishing the county and building all these beautiful buildings that we live in now. There are more Board of County Commission meetings. There are more workshops. There are more VAB meetings. And your meetings are longer. You're doing more in them. Your agendas are longer. You're considering more projects and issues. And that's important, and we're here to respond to those. Did you know that next week, you have two workshops and one regular meeting in one day? That's a lot. I think everyone in this room is, is aware that we're, we're a very willing partner with your operational folks, Heidi and your financial services. And we are collaborating with them like we never have before. We've partnered in the last year to handle the fiscal component of your projects and your grants, which we're very happy to do. We collaborate daily, and we should be, more than we ever have before, to streamline processes and make both sides work and run more efficiently. We're in the process right now of creating training for new Board of County Commission employees, specifically involved in the financial processes, to improve the transparency and the transparency dashboard that you got to work so hard on. And I would love to thank Heidi and Jorge. I have never worked with county administration on the executive level that have been this effective and effective and a pleasure to work with. And I can tell you, it's just very nice to have counterparts on your side that are so professional, and we really appreciate that. Another huge driver in need for additional people is the implementation of new financial accounting system. And Commissioner Hanson, you've been around since the beginning of this. You've heard Munis discuss for years and years and years, and you guys have spent millions of dollars implementing that system. And I have to tell you, after watching it from the beginning to where we are right now with the full implementation, this system is much more appropriate, system size, quality, and caliber, and complexity for the size county that we are, we currently reside in. The only downside is a system of this complexity comes with additional considerations. And Munis works extremely well. I think everybody in this room who works with it will tell you that. But it comes with a huge support component. That's, that's the downside. And we, at the clerk's and comptroller's office, are the hub for that support. Originally, all the departments interact with this system. There's absolutely no room for downtime or delays, and that's why we work hard to keep this system up and functioning at all times. And additionally, Munis has made the transparency dashboard on your website better. And I know Jorge, I don't think he's here today, this, that's been a kind of his baby, his passion project. And I can tell you that it's been a pleasure working with him and Munis and the financial services department over on your side to make that transparency tool a great tool for the public, to take a look and be able to see what you guys are doing at any given time just by clicking on the website. So we're grateful to be a part of that. Technology, good or bad, I don't know, but it's absolutely necessary to do what we do. We all have to do it. It's a, it's a necessary evil now. I think most, now I know, all of you were aware that I worked in the office when Gail Wasworth was the clerk and comptroller. She's my hero. Gail started before anybody really took on this responsibility, the epic task of imaging over 100 years of your records. We have continued that work for the last eight years, eight and a half years that I've been the clerk and comptroller, the work of preserving the county's precious records. When I began working in the office, there were 8,000 to 10,000 square feet of shelves of records packed to the ceilings. We have managed to cut that footprint by two-thirds since I have been the clerk and comptroller. And we have taken that space and we have repurposed it for our IT department, which is now the people and the professionals necessary to store and manage this huge digital footprint that we've created for ourselves. And this is kind of a nuance, but it's something that I've talked about in the past, and I'm going to continue to harp one. The idea of facilities, it's changed. It's no longer the brick and mortar buildings that we needed in the past to take, store, and preserve records from the entire perpetuity of the county. This brick and mortar has turned into terabytes, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that as we, we work through this. But it has been a drastic change, and it has happened almost overnight. And that is a big component of our budget today. Disaster recovery, it is absolutely critical that disaster recovery costs are acknowledged, strategized, and appropriated to sustain the current models that we have for technology and continue to be innovative and move forward. And I have to say, me, no one in this county is perfect. System failures are going to happen. For example, last hurricane season, the backup generators that power the justice center, they failed. It was a perfect storm. I think we have two or three generators over there, nothing worked at the same time. I'm happy to say, though, well, not happy to say, this caused service outages to the public and to our partners. And we, of course, we always figure out a way, and because of the hard work of the clerk's office and county, we were able to remedy this, and we've hardened that system in the meantime, so hopefully this won't happen again. But recognizing the risk of a potential failure, we have begun the idea of routine testing in our offices, and I know the county's been contemplating this as well. Last Friday, we conducted a real-time disaster recovery exercise to ensure system readiness. It was during business hours when courts were open, and we basically pulled the plug on all the systems and says, okay, let's see what we do when this really happens. We plugged it back in, and we made it work. And we discovered that we had some failures and some flaws. But by doing these, when time is not of the essence, I think it allows us to have a much better, more qualified response when the time does happen in the real world. So we're going to continue to work with county administration, make sure that these goals are sustainable for us and for them. I think in the beginning, you'll recall me mentioning that the comptrollers are responsible for investing the board of county commission excess proceeds. Excess proceeds currently invested in the open market are in excess of $200 million right now. That is a lot of cash. Over the past three years, our average interest on income and on investments is better than $5 million annually. This increase in revenue would easily cover the increases needed for my needs-based budget I am proposing today. The clerk and comptrollers' office functions aren't nearly as exciting as supporting your beaches. I know that there's a lot of passion on that board for it, but nonetheless, we are extremely important. We have watched the county grow by leaps and bounds and through your considerate management. Our financial position has never been as strong as it is now. There's no longer need for tax anticipation loans like we did in the past. You are in compliance with your reserve requirements. You're in a great place. I would like to think that the clerk and comptrollers' office has been a huge part of that partnership, and I want to be able to continue to complement your ever-growing needs as you foster Flagler County in a continued era of responsible growth. Thank you, commissioners. I'll do the best I can to answer any questions you have today. If they're too technical or number-driven, I'll be happy to get back to you at a future date with them. What can I do for you?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
This time, I'll open it up to the board for questions from Mr. Bexley. Commissioner Pangton.
What was the impact of the state increasing fees that you get to keep from last year? That started last year, correct?
That would be in our court division, and it was, it was meaningful. I can't quote exact numbers, but it did allow us to expand our court operation a little bit. That is separate from the budget that we are proposing to you today. So numbers-wise, I'm a little loose. Yeah, it's pretty good. 180,000 bucks. That, that helps us strengthen our court side. Thankfully, you guys aren't legally responsible, although you have helped us in years past when there were revenue shortfalls and we needed to keep the lights on and the people working. So thank you for that. Any, anything else, Commissioner Pangton?
Your five FTE, what would they be staffed to?
We're proposing them in the following departments, kind of based on the presentation that you heard today, in IT, finance, and in records specifically to address the additional need of value adjustment board, and in your increased commission meetings and the increase in, in meeting times, et cetera, and for our response to that. I don't have an exact plan on how those specific employees will be allocated. The idea is to get those five positions funded so we can put a plan together on how to utilize them to best use the, the five to respond to your needs.
Is recording up for your?
It's kind of flat right now. Yeah, I think we can all see inventory. Commissioner Richardson, inventory's high out there right now, so, yeah, it's not, they're not moving like they used to, and that's what drives official records.
I think they went to, but I was told it was a five-and-a-half-month sales time.
Ooh, jeez.
Coming from minus 30 days.
Yeah.
When you had overbidding, and of course, that was due to the economic plan of the times. It's always been that way. So we're still in that down market for quite a while, from what I understand.
The five FTE you see to manage Munis and cloud, basically?
Yeah, it's kind of a combination of everything. I'm not saying that every bit of the FTE allocation that we're requesting today is just to cover increased meetings and such, because that's, that would not be correct. That's just one component of it. The management of Munis, the increased management of, like I said, the terabytes over the shelves, you combine all of these different components of the office together, and that's where the demand for the five comes in. And the additional work that our finance department's doing in cooperation with county financial services, it doesn't take away from anything that a financial service is doing. It just kind of alleviates maybe one small, very small portion of what they're doing just so we can help them and us come to a final product better and easier.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one little pet peeve, and it's only because I'm an accountant. I hate the word "other," and I hate the word miscellaneous. So under your other operating expenses?
Yeah.
It didn't go up, well, it did, changed 135,000. Is that where some of that terabyte is? Or is that where, what's in that roughly?
I don't know.
I don't need, I don't need 10 items.
No, I get it.
Just in general.
I'm going to need some help on that one. I don't have that sitting in front of me right now. Okay, it's, it is technology. It is exactly what you're, yeah, I kind of figured this what it was. And I apologize, I hate vagueness in budget documents, too, but that's how we have to capture some of this stuff. That's why you're asking questions right now. So you're, that's exactly what it is, equipment and terabytes.
I just want to thank you. I remember when those records were getting, taking up, probably could have crashed the building, the floor down. And I, I know what you've been doing since you've gotten in that position, and your staff is really wonderful, wonderful help for us in the county commissioner. So I just wanted to give you a thank you, and thank you to your staff for your knowledge, your expertise, your professionalism, and always having an answer for my, my silly little questions on time. But I just wanted to let you know that while we're here today, because I think we have some great constitutionals, so I wanted to thank you personally. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I agree with you. When I meet with the folks in my office, the executive level, all the way down to the, the clerks that work on the line, I'm the dumbest guy in the room, and I like it that way. They're the people that make me look good, and I appreciate them. And part of this movement that we're doing today is to try to acknowledge those people and to keep them on staff, and to allow them to have a living wage, and to retire, and to stay in Flagler County and continue to appreciate all this good that you guys have done over the years. And what you said about the constitutional officers, I echo that, too. I got to meet with my constitutionals this morning. We had a little sidebar, and we do that a lot now. You have the best five constitutional officers in the state of Florida, and I'll toot my own horn a little bit, I don't mind doing that. I absolutely love working with these guys, and they're, they're just as good as it gets. Anything else, commissioners, chair?
Anything?
Just a comment on the Munis program. You might recall that I was in your shorts about, about could you implement this without crashes, without, and get the training we needed to have? And I just harangued and harangued you on that.
Yeah.
And you did it.
Yeah.
You got it done.
It wasn't the clerk's office. It was...
You got it done.
Those folks sitting in the back of the room right over there that, yeah, you two back there, your, your financial services and a lot of the other departments in this county. This was not a one-man show right here. It took significant resources for years to make it a success. And I mean, we're still learning to this date, but we're, we're going to get better. We're going to get better. And thanks for getting in my shorts. I'm glad you're out of them now.
All right, before my comments, I need the screen with the overall spreadsheet. So this is a primer for each of the other constitutionals as well, and you're just happened to be first, Mr. Bexley. So, so we're basing the county's budget on projected revenues of almost $12 million. That's based on the property values and growth built into that. We each have six different equal constitutional offices up here that have to be able to spread $12 million around. We had a priority at the beginning of budget session of to build a budget based on flat or lower millage. So based on flat millage, that's almost $12 million in flat millage times 95%, which is our target. So as each of you come up here, we've got work to do. And I understand you said it's a needs-based budget, and you work hard on maximizing, right? Work hard on maximizing taxpayers' funds for efficiencies. We do as well. We've, we're the first governmental agency in Flagler to submit to the governor to be part of the DOGE review process. As I understand, the constitutionals have elected not to join us on that. So comment on that, on the, on how that works into the overall trying to work together as a team on efficiency if we all don't go under the same process. And it's voluntary, I fully understand, but if we're not going to work together in that, in that team atmosphere, then how do we be able to approach our public with a, with that same team mentality?
Gee, I'm really glad I'm first to answer this. I'm a big fan of DOGE. I think that federally, it's doing some great things, but I'm not going to get into politics. That's not what this is about. So I don't see it as a team, teamwork thing. Our biggest teammate in this county is the county, the BOCC and the administration and all the, the departments, because we work with you guys every day. The, the DOGE letter that came to the county was addressed to the county. I think that, I'm not going to speak for my fellow constitutionals, but we all talk to our associations, and frankly, it just, it wasn't directed to us. I don't think, I don't feel like there's going to be a movement where they want to scrutinize constitutional officers. I could be wrong. At this time, we're not going to provide the information because we weren't specifically asked for it. Should that time come, I'm first guy in line, absolutely. I have absolutely nothing to hide. I fill records requests every day about specifics of our office, and I don't mind doing it. But I guess I'll just leave it there. I don't mind doing it, but I haven't been asked. And should that time come, we'll fill it, absolutely. No question.
Well, I don't know that we ever got a specific ask. We volunteered as part of our, our internal efficiency processes because...
Gotcha.
From our standpoint, we're, we're continually looking and not, not adverse to an outside review coming in, have no idea what they'll find or what they'll review or what they're looking for, but from a philosophical standpoint, that was the basis for working with the governor's office under that, under that system for DOGE. So I mean, really, individually, I think going back to your needs-based budget, I think every single one of these offices is basing their budget on needs. So needs, if we're going to, right, and we've, we've set high goals of a 4% COLA. We all have the same problems, if you will, of increasing costs to insurance, health insurance, and, and other operating costs that are built into this. So based on my original comments, I don't know that, from my standpoint, we're, we've got work to do, and hopefully, we will be able to have those conversations as we move forward in this budget process.
Happy to be a part of them.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Sheriff Staley, you are next.
Thanks, Tom, for setting the groundwork. Mr. Chairman, vice chair and commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to present our, our budget. And since we do have some new commissioners here, I'm going to take a few minutes and talk about the sheriff's office before we get into the nitty-gritty. And there we go. So the sheriff's office is the largest and only full-service law enforcement agency in the county. We provide all the police services for the city of Palm Coast, town of Beverly Beach, town of Marineland, as well as the incorporated areas. And we support the Flagler Beach and Bunnell Police Departments. We provide all the court and detention services in Flagler County and our jail, the Sheriff Perry Hall inmate detention facility. As you know, I call it... The Sheriff Perry Hall inmate detention facility, as you know, I call it the Green Roof Inn, has a legal capacity of 404. We also currently operate the 911 Center in Flagler County, which answers and dispatches all 911 and non-emergency calls for police fire and medical services in the entire county. We have more, we have about 375 full-time employees and about another 100 volunteers that serve our community. The agency is a five-diamond accredited agency. Let me put that in perspective for you. There are, the majority of agencies in Florida do not even have one accreditation. The majority of agencies across the country, which is over 19,000, are not accredited. So your sheriff's office is accredited by five. Law enforcement accreditation. I served six years on that commission, one year as chair till I was termed off. And I will tell you that this is not a paper tiger. We take it seriously. During my tenure on the commission, we revoked the Broward County Sheriff's Office accreditation. That's how serious we take it. Corrections is, your detention facility is now accredited. The communications center is accredited. We're accredited by the National Institute of Ethics, and the medical side of the jail is accredited. I'm not gonna go over all of this. It's in our annual report for you, but we answered almost 112,000 calls for service last year. We conducted over 21,000 traffic stops last year, made 3,200 arrests last year, 162 DUI arrests. We served the kids, 125. We took shopping at Walmart that wouldn't have had a, a Christmas otherwise. We answered or handled 3,225 crashes. We do not know how to drive in this county for a variety of reasons, not just because people are impatient, but because of the road congestion, engineering, those kind of things. Out of those 20, almost 22,000 traffic stops, we wrote 6,000, a little over 6,000 traffic citations, 27 boating citations. But our 911 center handled 143,000, almost 144,000 calls into that center, both 911 and non-emergency. And again, that's for everybody. We continue to have historic crime reduction despite our population increasing, and our trend so far in 2025 is down. Now, I will tell you, it's very hard for the last two years to compare previous years because the federal government changed their entire reporting system. So the way we used to count it and had to report is completely different. And it was fully implemented in 20, well, 2024 was the first year it was fully implemented. And a lot of agencies around the state and the country are not even reporting under the new system. They're just not reporting in here. But you can see the trend still goes down when you look at the crime index, which did not change in the reporting process. The resident, city of Palm Coast does a professional survey every two years. The last one was in 2024. 92% of the residents felt safe in Palm Coast. The 82% of the residents said our services were good or excellent, which tells me we have room to improve. 78% rated our crime prevention in the city either good or excellent. Again, I think we have room to improve. And 81% felt very or somewhat safe about property crime, and 79% felt safe from violent crime. Now, let me just kind of edit, give you an editorial here. One of the problems with being transparent and telling the community what's going on, they think crime's up, when in reality, crime is down over 50% since 2017. So, that's a double-edged sword, but I believe an informed community is a safer community, and we're gonna continue to be transparent. But that's probably what affected some of these numbers, because statistically, the perception doesn't match reality in what's reported to us.
It's being on the radio every day, that, with the summaries of what...
Well, that probably doesn't help either. But again, it goes back to transparency.
Right.
So, in fact, they haven't called me today for that. A couple of other things. USA Today named Palm Coast the second-best city to move to out of 30 in Florida. Number one was Gainesville, number seven was Daytona Beach. You can see these other entities that, that rank communities. Palm Coast being the second safest city in Florida out of their 15, with the villages being number one. And overall crime grade in Flagler County is either, the lowest is an A and the highest is an A+. And we're 39th safest city in America in Palm Coast. These are not statistics that we asked for. In fact, it was sent to us when they announced it. And so these are all independent assessments. Mentioned the total crashes. You know, one of the biggest complaints that we get is traffic complaints throughout the county. So in 2017, when I became your sheriff, there were five motormen. There have probably been five motormen for decades, okay? At least a decade, if not two decades. Today, so initially, we added five Mustangs, slick tops, Mustangs for traffic enforcement, paid for by the city of Palm Coast in their contract. Since then, we've added three more Mustangs and three more motors. That's a 213% increase in the traffic unit because of what we're seeing in there. Traffic fatalities, I'm gonna tell you, this one is a hard one to impact. We study, we analyze our traffic crashes, our traffic fatalities, on where they're occurring, if there's anything specific that's the cause. And one year we're up, one year we're down. So last year, we were down by fatalities. But there is no rhyme or reason, and I'll give you an example. An RV going northbound on 95, this was about 18 months ago, left Volusia County, front tire blows out in Flagler County, they lose control, they hit the wood line, and two people are killed. Now, they could have blown that tire in Volusia, they could have blown that tire in St. John's, but that tire blew in Flagler County. And so it's those kind of things that we can't have any real impact on, other than, because they, they were doing nothing other than, and having owned an RV, I can tell you what happened. Low miles on the RV, old tires, and they're not checking them. I guarantee you, that's exactly what, what caused that crash, because you get the sun rot on them. What we do know is that the safe, or the most dangerous roads generally are state roads. And we have very few troopers assigned to Flagler County. In fact, I think there's six. And I have spoken multiple times and written letters to the Colonel of FHB that we need more troopers here. Understand their problem. They have to run the entire state. But Putnam County shouldn't have more troopers than we have. We have an interstate, and that's exactly what's going on. And because we work the crashes, because if we didn't work the crashes, then our residents would have to be waiting three, four, five hours for a fender bender like they do in Orange County in there. But generally, the traffic fatalities are occurring on our state road, with the exception of Belt Air and Palm Coast Parkway. The good news is, our population in the jail is going down. You may recall, just a couple of years ago, we were, it was going the opposite direction, which this graph shows you that, and we were averaging a little over 300 inmates a night. Now, we're down to just a little bit above 200 a night in the jail. And we see that trend continuing, and I think there's a couple of reasons for that. We do a lot of programs in the jail to try to give our inmates a helping hand, to turn their life around so they don't come back. And, and most of that is funded under state and federal grants, and hopefully those will continue. Because we now do mental health, we do addiction recovery in the jail, and the list goes on. And we give trades with our partnership with skills, with our partnership with Flagler Technical College. Any other thing that I think's going on is frankly, we have a reputation of don't, don't commit a crime in Flagler County, because you're gonna get arrested. And I can give you an example. I won't say how long ago, but it was a while ago. We tried to buy an ounce of cocaine from a sus- suspect, from a poison peddler. And he told my undercover people that, "I'll sell you the ounce, but not in Flagler County." So we went to Volusia County and bought it from him, in partnership with Volusia. We know that we've had incidents where criminals come out of Jacksonville, Duval County, and they steal a car up there, and then they hit St. John's County auto burglaries, they hit us, they hit Volusia County, they leave that stolen car there, steal a car, and go back to Jacksonville. Well, they found out very quick, they made a mistake of coming to Flagler because of our technology. We had, at least in that case, the four people in jail within two or three days. So probably the same group or somebody affiliated with them left Jacksonville about a month or so later. They hit St. John's County, they skipped Flagler County, and they went to Volusia. So, doesn't matter to me as long as they skip our county, as long as we're getting a reputation. So I think it's a combination of our crime is down, the criminals realize that we are tough on crime, and we are doing inmate rehabilitation. And I think that's what's driving, despite our population growing, population in jail. This is just some of the stuff that we do in the jail. I won't go through all of these, but you can see, we do a lot to try to help the inmates turn their life around. Here's our Homeward Bound program. So every patrol car you see out there that's marked, the inmates applied that graphic, they printed that graphic using the technology that we have at the jail, and none of that technology was purchased by the taxpayers. That was all paid for out of the inmate welfare fund, because it goes back into teaching a trade for the inmates. Commissioner, you asked about grants. So, I have a philosophy in my agency, and I have a phenomenal grant person who's actually, that's her collateral duty. Her real duty is payroll and benefits. But we go after every grant that we can, because that money that we pay in this county to the federal government and state government's gonna go somewhere, and it might as well come back to Flagler County. So, our grant awards were a total of 2.657 million. And you can see here what it is. And these are services or programs that without these grants, we just wouldn't be able to do, unless frankly, you funded it. And so I'd rather get the money and bring it here. And so, in fact, the big one there, the 1.299 million, that's our, our grant to rehabilitate inmates in the jail that are addicted predominantly to narcotics. This is what it costs for a deputy the first year, is 157,000, almost $158,000. Now, trust me, the deputies aren't being paid that. They wish they would, I'm sure, but you can see all the costs here, whether it's the health insurance, the retirement, the salary, et cetera, et cetera. You look at my budget, the majority of the budget, 56%, is in the law enforcement division. And then you have the bailiff division, and we're statutorily required to protect the judges, if you will, and serve the process of the court, whether that is a warrant or civil process, forcible writs, whatever it is. City of Palm Coast pays 18% in their contract of the budget, and detention is 22%. I want to mention one thing about the city of Palm Coast. One of the first things I heard when I was elected sheriff by the board, some of you were there and some of you weren't at the time, was that the city of Palm Coast needs to pay more. And so, since I have been sheriff, any increase that we have had, whether it's staffing or the health insurance, whatever it may have been, the city of Palm Coast pays 100% of that cost. And the split that we have is that as the board of county commissioners, you have historically funded a basic level of law enforcement across, throughout the county. And the city of Palm Coast, many years before I was sheriff, said that they wanted an enhanced level of service. Now, before me, I don't think they paid the full freight of that, for that enhanced level. But I can tell you that everything that I've asked for, they are, okay? Because those services are 100% dedicated to the city of Palm Coast. Just, this is what it costs for law enforcement services in Flagler County. So if you look at the green, we cost $448.21. Now, I want to keep in mind that this is a fair apples-to-apples. It's not including the court, it's not including detention. This is strictly law enforcement. $448 per capita. Flagler Beach residents are paying $549, and the city of Inbanell are paying 611. And I'm the only full-service law enforcement agency. And by that, I mean, I have everything, I have CSI, crime scene, I have the Behavioral Response Unit, I have victim advocates, and the list goes on and on, that you fund, fortunately, and thank you for that. So we have, we support them when they have those big issues. I'm the only one that has undercover unit in there to impact our drugs and the other things that undercover units deal with. If you look at the per capita for nearby, we're still at 448. Putnam County is at 528. St. John's County is 570. Volusia County's at 599. If you look at populations that are near our size, okay? Sumter Sheriff's Office, 125,000 population, we're actually a little bit bigger, $591. And Indian River County, which is 117,000 population, is $659 per capita. So you're getting a better deal than these other locations are. But law enforcement is not cheap. So let me talk about some of the budget increase, increases, because I don't like, I don't like some of these numbers either. I'm right there with you, okay? To do the COLA, 4%. The FRS rates and the health insurance estimate, increase of 15% in the collective bargaining agreements with the unions, is 4.6 million of my increase, okay? Now, I just want to drill down just a little bit on that so you understand. FRS rate increase, 2.4% for high risk, not quite as high for professional support. The majority of my employees, our employees, are high risk. If you're in detention, if you're sworn in detention, sworn in law enforcement, or CSI evidence technicians, they're considered high risk. That is $1.2 million of that 4.6 million next year. And the worst thing about it is, I have to start paying that July 1, that increase. So I've already, I'm having to find about $400,000 in my budget to be able to cover what the state did to us, starting July 1, just to cover September 30. Because if I can't find it, I don't have a choice. Then I'd have to come back and ask you for that. Our health insurance, you know, we, we burke away from your health insurance a few years ago, and, and that has been successful. However, our costs are creeping up, just like yours have been. And so I believe your cost per employee is a little over 17,000 per employee going into the next fiscal year. I think it's like 17,000, like 40 bucks or something like that. Mine now, for next year, we think will be 16,800. So I'm still below yours, but not as good as it was, I think, three years ago. Now, we're still negotiating this contract. We're working two carriers against each other, and we hope that that number will come down doing that. But we, so we put in the budget what we think worst-case scenario is, and we won't have that final answer. And we won't have that final answer until probably the end of July, middle of August, probably, right? Okay. And we're pitting the two carriers against each other. So, you know, and then my contractual obligations. My contracts with the unions say that they get 4% COLA, they get whatever COLA you authorize across the board, okay? But they also get a merit increase that's 2%. And that's a phased in. The COLA is, you know, October 1. The 2% merit occurs when their anniversary comes. So it's not a full year cost, at least the initial year. I've given you an option to transfer our dispatch center employees to the Board of County Commissioners. And let me explain why I came to this. As costs continued to escalate, we, like you, are always looking at our operations. Well, I'm providing a countywide service with people that by statute, I'm not required to do, number one. But then if you look at the operation, the Board of County Commissioners owns the building that they're in, the office area. They own the radio system. You guys own the 911 system and non-emergency system and you own the, what did I forget? The CAD system, CAD and RMS. The only thing you don't have is the people. And so looking at my budget, looking at what was going on, it was like, well, why am I doing this? And so we staffed it at, at my staff level, you know, what, what will change? It's an accredited accreditation comm center. The training that they get in there is also accredited and licensed by the Florida Department of Health and Human Services, which is what's required. And so everything is the gold standard. But why do I really need to run it? Because I'm answering the calls for everybody, whether it's non-emergency or emergency. And on top of that, the Stonehill Douglas Commission recommends that one entity be the P S A, Public Safety Answering Point, okay? There's been a bill in the legislature last two years, hasn't come out of committee that requires that. All indications are that it's very likely will pass next fiscal year. So it's like, okay, let's just get ahead of where the state is going in the commission recommendation. Because here's the way it operates right now. As I mentioned, you have all the equipment in the facility. But if we need some, if one of those entities, one of those pieces go down, your fire chief is responsible for the 911 system and non-emergency phone lines. Your IT department's responsible for the CAD and RMS system. And your emergency management's responsible for the radio system. So we're having to call three different internal units if there's an issue, because we don't control any of that for the repairs and those things do go down. We had a, when they were repaving State Road 100 here just a couple of months ago, they cut the fiber, knocked out our 911 system, knocked out the radio system. And we had to, you know, we have partnerships with St. John's County, Putnam County and Pasco County. The other thing that came to light that, that really where this made sense to me is recently, we had two things that we asked, that was on the consent agenda and we asked the county administrator to pull them. One was the fire chief, because he's responsible for radio, for the 911 system. And he had put on, on there a consent agenda for an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Alachua County Sheriff's Office, that in the event that the 911 system went down, they would receive the calls. Now, there's lots of issues with that and I won't belabor that here unless you want me to, but in that agreement required me to send an employee to Gainesville. There was no communication to me at all. We just found it on a consent. And more recently, there was a, a consent item for the cost of CAD services and I think that one was just CAD to, that was on a consent agenda. And that caused me to look at it, okay? Because we've gotten the bill increases for the last two years, going on three years, if you look at next year. And I started drilling down on that stuff. And it was like, I don't think this formula is fair. I'm paying the lion's share. And so as a result, we asked again, your county administrator to pull it from the agenda because both of those issues were not ripe for discussion. And so as a result, when I'm looking at all of this, to me, it makes logical sense that since you, as the Board of County Commissioners, pretty much have all the pieces, with the exception of employees, that you should have the employees. So that's one option. If you do that, it reduces my top budget by 2.88 million. I recognize that just moves that money to you guys, okay? I've asked for 12 new deputy sheriffs, three paid for by the Board of County Commissioners, nine paid for by the City of Palm Coast. That follows the workshop, the joint workshop that's been held twice. And this is year two of that, that plan. The other increases that are coming there, and I don't like these increases as much as you do. I got 642,000 for inmate medical care and we went out to bid and only two companies bid. Inmate medical care is high risk and the providers are competing with private hospitals that pay much more. So an RN at Advent Health makes a lot more money than an RN working in a jail setting. We are still negotiating. One company was actually higher and their bid, we weren't sure they could actually deliver. So basically, we're negotiating with the current company. Now, I will tell you that's not listed here. As you know, with Prime Medical, they vet all the medical bills for the inmates that have to go out of the facility. So we do as much as we can inside, but sometimes, you know, our inmates are not the healthiest people when they get arrested generally. I'm sure there's some exceptions to that. They generally don't have health insurance. They generally, you know, have some addiction issue, mental health issue and so forth. So what was happening previously for the last few years is that we would send them out. Advent Health would send you a bill and it would be paid. Now with Prime Medical, they send Prime Medical the bill, which gets reviewed significantly. And they created contracts with the service providers, whether it's Advent Health or Halifax. That has resulted in almost a 60% reduction in what you're having to pay. In the last two years, that's over $2 million that we've been able to save the Board of County Commissioners by doing that process. And I think your team just met with my team on exactly how that process works. Another increase, radio user fees. So I don't control this. Your staff tells me how much I have to pay. And until it got really high, I didn't really look at it that much, to be candid with you. So it's, this next fiscal year, it's a $266,937 increase. However, because it got so high, we started digging into that. So let me explain to you what you have had to fund and what I've had to absorb. In fiscal year 22, 23, the fee for radios was $285,304. The proposed fee for next year, starting in October, is $1,041,000. That is a 265% increase in three years. We're not even at three, year three yet, okay? That's ridiculous. CAD system, 242,635 dollar increase. Fiscal year 22, 23, I was being billed 95,000. Next fiscal year is 346,000. That's a 262% increase or $250,000. This hit so high on the CAD that I have my staff looking right now on what it will cost me to do an independent CAD. I can't afford this. The taxpayers can't afford this, okay? And actually, we have already found one. We're waiting for the final number as an estimate, but SmartCop, which this agency had pre-2006, when this new CAD was purchased by, long before you, everyone here was there, okay? Same thing with the county administrator, they inherited this stuff. SmartCop is what this agency ran back then. St. John's County Sheriff's Office has SmartCop. Volusia County is looking at it right now. I think Putnam County has SmartCop. But here's the price comparison, from what we've been told. $150,000 annual fee for 600 law enforcement officers in St. John's County. I only have 200 law enforcement officers and it's 346,000. Something's wrong, okay? Either the vendor's taking care of you and I had, I had some, when it was known as New World and not Tyler, I threw, and Tyler bought New World. When I was the under sheriff here, I threw the owner's daughter out of my office because they were doing such a shitty job and she came in wanting more money. I said, get the hell out of my office. And here we are, you know, 10 plus years later, still with Tyler. So, you know, so we're, we're actually looking at, how can I reduce my radio cost? So there's new radios that have been manufactured now by Motorola and Harris that when the towers, when, when you don't have a good signal on the radio system, it starts looking for cell towers. And so there are parts in this county, including where I live, I'm reminded every time I go home and every time I come to work, that I lose radio service, split second at those But I lose, I lose radio. My radio beeps to tell me out of range, I'm in Flagler County. And so we're now looking at these radios that maybe I can give the Board of County Commissioners back every car radio that's in my car and deputies will only work off of a portable radio. We're testing that now to see if that will work. There's some things we have to look, battery, life of the battery for 12-hour shift, those kind of things. But then I only need one radio instead of the boosted radio in the car. And I can tell you the system works. I was in Phoenix, Arizona, and I took my radio with me. I could talk to my team from Phoenix, Arizona. I could hear exactly what was going on. We just had a big incident when I was out of town a couple of weeks ago. I listened to the whole thing on the radio from Tennessee and then I got on the radio and committed my team for a great job. So I'll buy a couple hundred of those radios and give back everything else instead of paying $1,041,000 a year. So we're looking at those kind of things to try to get you a better, a better product. Operating supplies, ammunition, uniforms, fuel has come down a little bit. Hopefully, it will continue to come down as our president does his drill, baby drill to reduce the, the cost of fuel a little bit. But like anything else, ammunition, uniforms, all of those things go up in price because of what we've had to deal with, with the inflation and who knows what terrorists are gonna do. The Axon Contract, that's, that handles the replacement for our tasers, our car cameras, our body cameras, some of our technology in the Real Time Crime Center. Some of our laptops are getting old and we don't buy the rugged laptops because laptops have gotten cheap enough that basically if the deputy breaks one, you just throw it away and go buy another one because it's not, there's been spending $5,000, $6,000 for a rugged laptop. DNA, unfortunately, we need DNA, but it's expensive to use it, but you need it to solve crimes. Social media archiving, because we're transparent and we, this was actually a cost overrun that was occurring to the Board of County Commissioners and their, I don't know the structure, but in their, in your media side of the house, because it's based on, we have to record and save this by law for public records. And so we ran over and, and got a bill for the archiving. Auto and liability insurance has gone up, probably, I know my house insurance, my car insurance and no claims, no wrecks, but it goes up probably because of everybody else. Commissioner, I know you don't like nonspecific cost increases due to inflation. I was listening, about 420,000. So, so some of those things are just our day-to-day operation. It can be, it could just be paper that we use and the printers, the printers that we have in the patrol cars that write tickets, all of those kind of things are there. Over on the operational enhancements, the $213,000 for the security for our network, if you will, that's required. Federal government, if we want access to their systems, next year is a year we have to be in compliance. $78,000 maintenance service contract, repairs, the LPRs, a lot of these LPRs now are getting, getting old, some of them have been in place since 2017, 2018. And you know, when DNA, rapid DNA that we have in the jail, it's great to receive a free gift from the state of Florida, but it doesn't come without strings. So we got $250,000 to buy, to buy the, we were part of a, a 10-county pilot program, part of Speaker Renner's budget. And so the equipment we got for free in the first year of these modules that you have to use, it's almost like a cartridge, like in your printer, but it's for DNA. They're $92,000 to cover it for a year. And so first year was free, but the strings are now here. And Commissioner, one of you asked about debt service cost increase, I believe, okay? So $195,000. So how we purchase our vehicles is that we, we go out to bid for financing and we finance them for four years. At the end of the four years, we own them, but by then they generally have over 100,000 miles on, they have to, you know, be auctioned off. But we were getting interest rates below 2%. Now you can't, interest rates. I just bought my wife a new car and it was like, I can't believe I'm paying this. And it was a good rate, 4.85% that I found for a car loan. But, so just like in your personal life, we have that same situation here. So that's what that is, including the cost, you know, what was, what was buying a million dollars worth of cars is only about 850,000 today because of the price increase on the cars and we're getting. Just to kind of wrap this up positive, our volunteers save the taxpayers more than $930,000. Our inmate work crew, we estimate the labor that they do on county-owned property. Our inmate work crew, we estimate the labor that they do on county-owned properties, about a hundred-and-thirty thousand savings. This was the inmate medical billing program, it's total, I underestimated. So the total bill, for example, was three-point-seven-seven million last year, but the cost that you had was eight-hundred-and-forty thousand through that program. So we saved you about two-point-nine million for that. And we're constantly watching, researching grant opportunities. But let me just mention a grant, since Commissioner Carney, I think, brought this up. Grants generally do not allow you to do operating or to supplant existing funded services. They're enhanced, they're things that you wouldn't normally get, and of course, with the environment right now out of Washington, we don't even know if any grants are gonna survive, quite frankly, that we use, because there have been grants cut on crime prevention. I just don't have that definition and what grants they were. So hopefully, because we've had great success with our grants, and not only receiving them for law enforcement, but in the jail. Just some of our other challenges, just so you are aware of, Jacksonville criminals, unfortunately, finally found Flagler, but we're catching them, so hopefully that will, they will continue that. There's a violent Daytona criminal element that has a connection to Benel and Palm Coast and frankly Orlando. Technology has helped us reduce crime, but you still have to have deputies to respond when LPR hits, come in, otherwise the technology is useless. Flagler County ranks forty-six out of sixty-seven counties in combined city and county public safety expenditures, whether that's law enforcement, fire, rescue, and EM altogether, not just us. We rank the bottom of one-third of Flagler's, Florida's counties. State average for public safety is nine-seventy-seven-eighty-one. The average spending for public safety in Flagler County is six-hundred-and-forty dollars. Now I will tell you that I think you're getting a better deal than, than these other, other counties that are spending, you know, on average, nine-seventy-seven-eighty-one. And that's also because our crimes, crime's down, but our population is growing, so the needs still occur. You deputy sheriff, this is just a reminder, the reason we were in so many deficit deputies, and we've had to, you know, grow, and thankfully you, this board and the City of Palm Coast, but you can see the Board of County Commissioners, which is kind of in the green, what you funded, in the City of Palm Coast, there were many years, from two-thousand-and-six to seven, until fourteen-fifteen, City of Palm Coast didn't fund one deputy sheriff, but you did. And then we had to catch up. And then, since then, because of the studies and the joint workshop, I believe the City of Palm Coast is paying what they should be paying for the enhanced level of law enforcement. And with that, I'll be glad to get drilled.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Questions for Sheriff Staley?
Well, I get the Palm Coast funding the deputies, but there's a lot more to being a law enforcement office than being a deputy. So what portion of the other stuff are they paying?
Basically, none. What I would say to that is they are paying one for one school resource deputy, but again, that's a deputy sheriff, just assigned to a school. As far as the other support, they are not. Now I will tell you, with the exception of the communications center, which had, you funded, I believe, four new positions last fiscal year, or the current year that we're in, if I remember correctly, there has been no growth in the professional support side.
I guess I just don't understand the con, I'll, I'll come up to speed on that, but buildings, I mean, everything that goes into law enforcement is, I mean, I pay it in Flagler Beach, we've already had this conversation, I double pay. If Flagler Beach didn't offer me a police department, the sheriff would cover. Flagler Beach would have to pay for whatever we didn't cover. So, I, I just don't think there's been a big enough dive into that conversation, and I know it's not your job, it's my job.
I can give you a little insight there, if you would, would like.
Sure, sure, thanks.
So I'm gonna take you back to history in the nineteen, late nineteen-seventies. The city of Palm Beach sued Palm Beach County, saying dual taxation. That went, it took it about ten years, it went all the way to the Florida Supreme Court. The Florida Supreme Court ruled that there was no dual taxation, because city residents also receive sheriff services. Every time a patrol car drives through a city, they can do a traffic stop, they can make an arrest, it's in theory, crime prevention, they have the court services and so forth. So that's a Supreme Court decision. What is unique about this county, and this is the only county I've seen this done, in my fifty years in law enforcement, okay? That's scary to say. But I've been in leadership positions now since nineteen-ninety-two, ninety-three. And what's unique about what's done here is that normally, when a city doesn't have a police department, they contract with the sheriff at full cost. Just look at Deltona. Palm Coast is actually bigger now than Deltona. They contract for, with Volusia County. You see a lot of this in South Florida, Broward County specifically, they pay the full cost of those services. Now my guess is it's not everything, because you're getting a SWAT team, you're getting other stuff, okay? This county, though, whoever created the model, it was long before any of us were here, in this, our current positions, said that we're going to provide a basic level of service across the county, whether you're in a city or you're in an unincorporated area. In the City of Palm Coast said, well, we want an enhanced level, so they created this contract, I think under Sheriff Fleming in the beginning, but I could be mistaken, sometime in that era. And so that's very unique here, because you don't generally see that, because you are not statutorily required to do that. Now, the unique thing here, is you could almost say, well, this is better than nothing, because if they didn't do that, I still have to serve the City of Palm Coast, if they don't have a police department under Chapter Thirty, as conservator of the peace. And so, it's good that we're, we're getting, I think next year's contract with them is just under twelve million. And to show you how they are funding the full cost, when I came in as sheriff, it was just under three million. But there's been a lot of growth, as you saw, in hiring for deputies. And so, I would still have the responsibility, whether they had a contract with me or not, and I would be coming to you to fund even more, or the service would drop. So that's a little bit of the history, Commissioner. Be glad to, you know, do it more in-depth for you, but this, this county is very unique on how it provides a county-wide level of service.
Does that number go up, is it tied to inflation or anything? Does it, does it change what, what Palm Coast pays you?
Yes. So it, it does two things. Commissioner, his workload, based on that study that says how many deputies it takes to answer X number of calls, so as the calls go up, not necessarily the population goes up, as the calls go up, which generally translates into the population. But it also, when we give them the price for next year, it includes existing deputies with no increase, any inflationary costs, whether it's health insurance, colas, all of that is part of it.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I have a quick question. We talked, you talked about purchasing these Mustangs. Would it be more cost-effective to lease, short-term leasing? Sometimes that's been a very good benefit for some companies and people and business.
Yeah, probably would if deputies, if, if those employees don't tear up the cars, okay?
Oh, I see. So when they smash them into the side of a car.
Because we're driving from zero to ninety very fast, a lot of idle time, people get arrested, bang into the cars, getting arrested, put a dent in it, and all those companies charge you more money, or if you go over the mileage. So we have looked at that. And in fact, we had our undercover people in leased vehicles from Enterprise, and frankly, our analysis was, it was ripping off the taxpayer at the end of the day, and so we buy their cars now.
Just a thought, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good, it's just the environment that we work in is different.
I didn't think about that, Tris.
Thank you. I'm sorry, regarding the, the moveover of this accredited answering center, are you giving, are you giving us dollar-for-dollar back out of your budget to take on the personnel?
No, the difference is, my budget doesn't go up as much this year. So in other words, it would be...
It'd be additional twenty-eight hun, two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars?
Two-point-eight million.
To keep them under you?
Mm-hmm. And do everything that I just...
But there's no savings to us to, to take them, it just, it'll be in my budget instead of your budget.
Correct, and it's a compliance with the Stoneman Douglas recommendation from that tragic incident in South Florida.
And has your, have you or your, or Mr. Mark met with the administrator to see how that, what those benefits are? Have you met with, I don't hate to throw Mr. Lord out there, because he's not here to speak, but have you met with, would that be the natural transit, transition point, would be Mr. Lord?
Yep. Well, actually, under the agreement, after the discussions, because it has been in discussion with, I guess he's still my chief of staff, he's here today, with your county administrator, we do have a draft agreement, and the director, that is my employee currently, so all the employees would come to you, including the director, and the director would report to Jorge, was my understanding, is that, that's the last I heard.
Correct, she would be a standalone equal to Jonathan or Chief Tucker.
Okay. All right.
Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
My comments are really basically the same. I, I did want to ask, one specific one about the, the ongoing commitment to our deputies, increasing deputies, but also comparing population estimates. Are we, are we tracking what was done population-wise in the labor study to what's been actual? So, are, are we trending the same, or is there variations in the population, that we need to go back and revisit the study?
Oh, you're not gonna like this answer, Mr. Chairman. So, the answer is, yes, we are tracking, but what you will find is that those studies were conducted twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty, and we're still working on the deputies that we should have had before twenty-twenty-one. So all this growth that's been occurring since twenty-twenty-one is not even in those
But there's, we write, there's a, the agreement was a three-year, I believe?
Three-year, and on year three, it starts to get into the new population growth. And that would be dependent also on the analysis, how many calls for service from twenty-one, twenty-one to twenty-twenty-seven have increased.
You'll be initiating a different, a new study?
No, I'm not gonna issue, create a new study. What I would do is use a formula that's there, that's roughly three-hundred and something calls per deputy, and see where that is with the calculation.
Right.
My point, my point is that we're still filling deputy deficits, that when you saw that one bar chart, when no deputies were hired, for many of those years, but the growth was still occurring, that was never, why former sheriffs didn't ask for it? Or maybe they did, I, I don't know the answer to that. We were in that hole, and we're digging our way out.
Last time we did have the joint meeting, I think, with the City of Palm Coast, I don't, I don't want to misquote you, but you said that they're still getting a great deal, the City of Palm Coast.
Well, well, they are, because here's the deal, if they were to start their own police department, not including capital, not including building cars, guns, all that stuff, well, maybe the guns, but they would be paying about thirty million a year, if they funded and staffed it properly, not including all the startup costs in there. And instead, they're gonna pay just under twelve million, I believe, next fiscal year. So it is a great deal. Now, now the City of Palm Coast's argument is, we can't pay county-wide ad valorem. Yes, you do. Florida Supreme Court's already ruled on that, that discussion back in the nineteen-eighties, and it doesn't hold water, according to the Florida Supreme Court.
So is there a, instead of continuing on a, a unicorn that we're under, a system that you said is one of its kind, is there a, is there a system that we should be following that's more equitable, whether it's a taxing district, just for law enforcement services that is county-wide, or goes just unincorporated in City of Palm Coast, so that we can average out and, and make it more uniform and, and fair?
That's a great question. I do not support municipal taxing unit, and I'll tell you why. You cannot, like, you, you could, you could pass it, it only applies to unincorporated areas or cities that agree to sign on. You cannot impose it onto a city because they don't have a police department, unless the mayor and the council, City of Palm Coast, for example, agree with it. I lived that life in Orange County when I was the undersheriff there, and I was responsible for negotiating the budget. The City of Bay Lakes, the City of Lake Buena Vista, which is all Disney World, if you will, the City of Belle Isle did not have police departments. They never paid DMS to you. They saved millions of dollars, and the county commission had no choice, but sheriff still has to respond to these calls, as a conservator of the peace, under Chapter Thirty, for free.
Right, but we would get the interlocal first, I mean, with them as part of that process, no?
Well, are you gonna, I guess if you could write one that locks it in for a very long time, not like what was done when, when you took over the Benel Fire Department, they get free services for thirty years, by giving up a fire truck in a building. That's a hell of a deal. I just looked at it today. And so, if you could lock something in, then great. But by law, you can only impose it in the areas that you control, the unincorporated, which means that you would be raising the taxes on the unincorporated areas to support basically a City of Palm Coast.
Obviously, that wouldn't work. It would have to be, there would have to be a joint agreement for that.
But to his point, is there any other model, or any other county? I think you said, this is a unique unicorn that we find ourselves in, but it, can you give us any help on?
Well, what I would say is, there's a decision point by the Board of County Commissioners. Do you want to continue a basic level of service across the county? That's a decision point, okay? You still have to fund the jail, you still have to fund the courthouse, so you're only talking the law enforcement side. If you decide you're not going to do that, then the decision point is, is how do you fund the existing services? It could be the City of Palm Coast has to come up with more money, it could be they say, too bad, we're gonna lower the service level. So, none of these, these are hard decision points that none of us created, because the only one, the only county, maybe there's... Because the only one, the only county, maybe there's one out there somewhere, there's sixty seven counties, but the only county I know that does it this way is Fledler County. South Florida, they get rid of their police department, they contract with the sheriff, the sheriff gives them the price tag. And sometimes they save money and sometimes they don't, they just don't get sued, the sheriff does instead, you know, so there's some other costs that they may save. But MSTU, public safety, sales tax, bad word, I know, uh, dedicated to public safety, and, and that was, uh, talked about a few years ago, uh, by this commission, by different people on the commission. That's really it, MSTU. But MSTU comes with a lot of problems because it, they could, they could sign an MSTU agreement when, when, how long before they cancel it? And then you're stuck. So, you know, I didn't live here when the city of Palm Coast was, uh, created, um, but I've certainly heard about it. And my understanding, at least from, you know, the, the residents that lived here before the city of Palm Coast was incorporated, that one of the impetus was, is that the, uh, the, the west side predominantly didn't like paying for the services in Palm Coast. And so that's how Palm Coast created their own city and ultimately became their own destiny with their municipal service taxing, you know, right, equivalent of the ad valorem in there. So all of those things, Mr. Chairman, that you said can be done, they all, it's, which poison do you want to drink?
And I guess in just in closing, same comments as for Mr. Bexley, um, all of us together, we're going to have to work together, we've got a three million hole to fill, um, so just want to keep the communications open as we work through this process and, um, and try to get to the finish line.
I, I commit to you that my staff, my agreement with the city does allow him to work on my budget, so he's not going away. And, um.
Is there any movement on, on, on joining us in Doge or is, is, are the constitutionals just not going to do that?
I have the same answer as Mr. Bexley. I will tell you what I, you know, because we are constitutional officers, you know, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for myself. As a constitutional sheriff, uh, under the constitutional Florida, I closely guard any appearance that I'm not independent. And for me, when the email came, that's what that was about. If Doge wants to ask me, say, we would like to Doge, the sheriff's office, I have nothing to hide. I mean, it's all public record anyways. Now, the timeframe that we were given, there's no way I, my staff could have done that, uh, in that timeframe, uh, because it is, it is work, uh, to produce it. I have an opinion on Doge. I love what it's doing in DC. They've certainly uncovered some, to me, some crazy, uh, spending. But I don't think Doge in Florida will be successful unless they also talk to people. Because if they're just looking at spreadsheets, that doesn't tell you the whole story. And this is coming from somebody that ran the Orange County Sheriff's Quality Assurance Unit, they called it staff inspection back then, where myself and my team would go in and look at how commands were operating, and we would look at the budget and then we ultimately gave recommendations to the sheriff. Didn't make you very popular, I can tell you that. But you can't get a full picture unless you have conversation. Spreadsheets, numbers, don't tell the whole story. They give you maybe some things to look at, but you've got to communicate. And I don't know if Florida Doge is doing that or not. If they're not, it's not going to be successful, in my opinion, for real long-term, uh, recommendations.
I don't think any of us got specific asks or an email that said, please, would you? We just have, have opened it up and, and volunteered ourselves, so, um, I understand. Just have to ask the question.
No, it's fine. I was expecting it. I'm just glad Tom led the way.
Can I ask one?
Absolutely, yeah, no, whatever you need to ask.
Sheriff, what is your retention like within your deputies? What's your retention rate, uh, retention happiness survey, whatever you do?
No, it's great. So here's, here's what I can tell you. I don't have a survey specific for that, but our turnover rate is about seven percent, which is law enforcement is very low. I am more than one hundred percent staffed and I have a waiting list. Now, most agencies across the county, and that's not just in law enforcement, that's in detention too. Most agencies across the country can't say that. Orange County Sheriff's Office, over a hundred and fifty vacancies, the last I heard, and that's six month old information. Volusia's been low, I don't know about where exactly they are today. And I will tell you, uh, and I'm not the number one pay. St. John's is number one. Volusia and I are close, and poor old Putnam is very low, okay? But it's a combination of things. It's the image of the agency, which includes the facility that you built, okay? That helped us a lot in recruiting when people didn't have to go through four different buildings to find us. You see a professional image. Our equipment is good. Our benefits are good overall. Uh, our pay is, you know, St. John's is competing with Duval County, and Duval County is skyrocketing their pay. So, uh, but I think it's the way we treat our employees, uh, in all of those things that I just said, that's why we're able to recruit. And I'll tell you another piece of that, and this was an unintended consequence of me doing this, because my jail chief did not want me to do it. We are on booked first day in. And the jail chief didn't want that, and I overruled him because I thought it was important to show what goes on behind those walls for the hardworking men and women of our detention side. That, along with being on police twenty-four seven, we have, I think it's next, it might have been yesterday, we had seventy-two people signed up to take our physical, uh, assessment test, our PAT test, seventy-two. That means seventy-two people want to come work here. Now, chances are, they didn't all show up, okay? And I haven't checked with my HR director today, but we probably have, um, thirty or forty that showed up for that. So I think it's a combination of all of that. So we're proud where we are, and my colleagues are jealous.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, vice chair's left, I know she had a hard stop, commissioners, thank you for your time, and we, we will work.
Thank you for your flexibility.
We will work with your county administrator.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Va- Mr. Gardner volunteered to go last.
Sorry, I was.
Mr. Gardner.
Between them two, I have already no time left.
So I don't have a power point, I don't have anything, you can see my budget. A third of my staff is in the field. Over the years, that's changed some, more technology, um, so you got less clerical people, but we're of course busy, we're in the field picking up houses, we are the people that come in your yard and bother you. My budget changed a lot because of the things that we're all changing for, you know, insurance, cola, all those kind of things. We have more technology cost, of course, um, and the fees for all that stuff keep going up, I can't understand that, but there's nothing you can do about it. I run a tight ship. My human resources department, my finance department, my purchasing department, my administrative assends us all sitting right there. Okay? So we're, we're streamlined as best we can be. So I, I don't know if y'all have any questions for me, but.
Well, you're, you're kind of also, uh, dependent on growth as, as the county grows.
Yeah.
You're, you're strained as well.
That's why the field department keeps going up, because, um, at one point I was twenty-eight, twenty-seven thousand inspections behind on five-year checks. Least important thing I do, but it's required by statute. But, you know, when you build a new swimming pool, we got to pick it up, but when we haven't seen your house in five years, well, we'll get to it when we can. You know, we have the permits and all those kind of things, but this is just, we have to lay eyes on your house. We struggle with things like that, and every now and then the Department of Revenue will notice and question something, they do it with all of us. You know, my budget is, is approved by the Department of Revenue, and, you know, they, well, they pat me on the back. We don't have a problem with what we pay people, how many, you know, our parcel count per employee is very reasonable compared to the counties that we, you could argue we compete with, but, um, and I don't spend a lot of money doing PowerPoints and presentations. That's a great savings to the county. And yeah, you know, and of course, you guys, um, I know we talked earlier about Find and Skeeter Control and people like that. Basically, you guys are about ninety-eight percent proud sponsors of my budget. And, um, you know, so I feel your pain, but, uh, I mean, y'all, y'all do pay for a budget, and then of course, you don't get to shove me around as much as maybe you'd like to when you're spending all that money, but I was looking at the budget, and I think my budget over the last twenty years has gone up a couple of million dollars. So I don't know if you want to put that into a percentage, but, uh, you know, I was thinking about what it was my first year, and by the way, I still have the same amount of employees as when I started. Two years longer than Tom's talking about.
This is great, we should just, uh, watch you guys go back and forth.
No, we practiced this this morning, right?
Doing my job for me, thank you.
And, uh, you know, the Doge thing, you don't bother, don't need to ask, it's the same thing. Look, if they really want something from me, they'll ask. They have access to everything I submit already at the Department of Revenue. They can look at it. They don't know what any of it means. I mean, I don't know what they could do, if they tell me to do something different, I'm probably going to look at them funny, because, I mean, they don't have a clue what we're doing, and, you know, I am, uh, at least somewhat helpful in the way you guys can fund your budget, so I'm trying to make sure we pick up stuff and make sure we get everything that's out there that leads to taxable value. You know, I always feel sorry for you guys because all these exemptions, all these caps, all these things that hold the values back, you know, there's ten billion dollars of value that you guys don't get to touch because it's protected. It's our homestead savings, our veterans that are, you know, not paying tax, uh, all those caps, even the ten percent cap makes a big difference today, and that's money you guys don't get to see. This year, we've got, what, about a billion dollars more, sounds great. Three quarters of a billion of that is new construction, so it comes with some other things y'all have to worry with. And then that leaves, what, a quarter billion dollars of increase, which sounds like a lot unless you look at, you know, what is our total values, like twenty-eight billion dollars or something, is that about right, twenty-eight billion? I can't remember the exact number. And out of that, you know, you subtract about ten billion dollars for the money you don't get to touch, which is, you know, we keep giving ourselves things and it makes it harder and harder, and of course, the reason everybody's mad about taxes, it's not the old timers, it's all the new people that just got here, because they're getting killed. You know, they're making up for the savings that I enjoy as a longtime homesteader.
Right.
So there's an inequity in our taxing structure, and every time the legislature meets, they add another little bit of that, you know, they want to give something else away or whatever, and it's, it's always making it less fair for somebody. There is no free lunch, you know? Someone saves money, someone else pays for it. But anyway, um, I think, uh, you see the increases. I am adding one field guy, moving some stuff around. We're not really increasing areas like deeds and permits and stuff, even though they've gone up, because we're using more and more technology. You know, you can get software that kind of, hate to say it this way, but eliminates the need for that growth in those personal, personnel.
Does AI come into play for you at all in efficiencies or?
Well, I invented AI. But, uh, no, um, I don't know, not really. I mean, you know, we still have to get boots on the ground, you could, I mean, what is AI? We have our camera system. It's a modeling, we're, we're Zillow, except we're good at it, okay? And, and probably because of the boots on the ground is the real difference, it's just statistical modeling, you know, I mean, I figure out what you have, you know, if I took your house, I would say it's this many square feet, this old, uh, the garage is this big, it's got a porch or a pool or a fireplace, any of those things, what kind of roofs it got, all these things, I just tell the model what you have. Now, that took me figuring it out. And then the model just goes, and spits out a number on the backside. Then we start taking everything away from you guys, you know, the homestead exemption, a senior exemption, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and three percent cap, or even, even the investment properties, um, you know, there's quite a bit of savings on those because of the ten percent cap. Saves them a little bit, but it does keep you guys from getting that excess money as the values go up. And that's, you know, part of the problem y'all find yourselves in today is there's a lot of money out there, you just can't get to it. So what do you do? You know, you got to deal with your mileage rates and all that, it makes, you know, and we all know how y'all like to say we're raising that tax rate, you know, it's one of those things that even if you explain it, it doesn't go over well.
So even in, um, even in real estate, when you try to zoom in on AI, it, it can't get down to the address. It'll say in the city of Palm Coast or something. I've, I've not been able to get it to come right down to the house yet, you know, in the description part.
Yeah, but I mean, if it does anything, guess where it got the information? I'm defying any property appraisers, just like Zillow, you know, they're getting all this stuff from us.
Jay, you know, I want to, I want to thank you for keeping Schneider's, um, program, number one.
Website.
Yes, and adding to it and including things like MLS numbers lately, that's a tremendous assistant for our twelve to fifteen hundred local, uh, realtors, as well as our outside companies.
Yeah.
Because the MLS was bringing in a different program, and it may have given us a lot of different information, but yours is complete and necessary and fulfills our needs and obligations. And it's just a great program, and I've seen how it's morphed throughout the years. The, the map, the, not just the mapping, mapping is great, adding, I see you added on more as we had flood insurance, things and things like that. So you, you, you've got a great program and you're constantly, um, morphing it into a better program. So I just personally want to thank you for all of those people that are out there using the facility, and I guess the public doesn't know how much, how important your office is as compared to all these other offices because of what you offer for professionals and outside professionals, outside our community too. It's, it's a huge, 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 huge tool that's constantly used and helps all of us with, um, our work. So I just wanted to let you know, because I've seen others leave, leave that program, and every time I get on that program, wherever I'm looking, whatever part of the state or the country, when I see the Schneider program, I'm like, oh, good program. So thank you for correcting that.
The website is actually, um, I didn't do it for you, I did it to keep you out of my office. So see, there's another cost savings.
You did a good job too, you know, I used to bother you a lot.
Because I don't have all the realtors and everyone in my office.
I used to bother you a lot.
And the public too, I mean, there's a million silly questions, but to the person, they're not. But here's the thing, almost every question they have, they can pop onto our website, um, and you mentioned the listings, well, one of the reasons the listings are there is because that's something I use to value your house. So basically, you can look on the website and kind of see everything I'm using, and it makes it fair. And if, if you ever call up to complain about one of them or something, what will happen is, is you'll talk to me and I'll bring up the website and try to get you to do it at home. and try to get you to do it at home. I don't, that Kama system that costs all that money, I don't even know how to turn the thing on. I don't touch it. But the website, I can do everything I need to do. I can show you why we're not wrong. And I have been wrong before. I mean, I know you probably didn't think that, but we do make mistakes from time to time. And the cool thing about it is, is see, I don't mind that. Because if I do, I'll fix it, as I always say, before you can get back downstairs to your car, I've already fixed it for you. But I do have to be wrong and more than not, with the staff I've got, I'm not wrong very often.
And on the staff, when customers go in there and they have questions, they are always so helpful and polite to the customers that I've sent in there for years. I'm talking about your staff, not necessarily you, but your staff. Because those, those folks really do a great job. Because it's a public office that people don't realize how many people go in there and they think you just sit in that corner upstairs and it's not true. Every time I've seen so many people coming to going and, and thank you for that service. And thank you ladies and your staff as well, because I know how pertinent it is to keep our community healthy and happy and kind. Thank you for that.
The website is such a good thing because of the quote, investment in it. I spend basically less than the cost for an employee, the extra stuff, not their salary, is about what it costs me for one person, basically, to have that website. I don't have anyone on staff that's responsible for it. It's done offsite. We feed them, we give them all the data and all that, but, you know, it's such a great thing. And I wasn't joking, it does, it keeps the public out. Think about it, my front counters, the same size as it was when I started. And how many people live here now? You know, one hundred thirty, one hundred thirty five thousand people. More parcels to deal with, all of that. And yet, the people coming in there have a specific business. They're not just walking to the counter. So, you know, technology has helped with all that stuff. But the website is a tool that, you know, it's a great benefit to me because everybody's happy, you know? And as a politician, of course, I need people to appreciate what we do. And, you know, even that is done with the idea of saving money. You know, I kind of always, I joke sometimes because Michelle, my chief deputy, when I first started, was working in the back and I walked back and I looked and her garbage can looked like someone had taken a salsa to it and cut the top off. It was old plastic and was breaking off. And I remember her saying, I said, get a garbage can. She goes, I can have a new garbage can? You know, because I mean, so it was like a big deal, you know, got to get a new garbage can. But in my office, it's not like what you guys are dealing with or what Heidi's dealing with. I mean, I've got thirty people. If someone gets a new computer or a desk or even a chair, I know it. It's not like it happens and I don't know about it. So it's pretty easy to keep my arms wrapped around it. So I'm not comparing what y'all are dealing with, what I'm dealing with. But, you know, it's kind of easy to, you know. And I'm sure that, you know, that number I gave you about going up a couple of million dollars in twenty years is probably reasonable. I never, I shouldn't have said it out loud because I don't know if it says I'm being bad or not. I have no idea. But, you know, the point is, we don't do anything without thinking about it. And, you know, I'll say this is, I reckon about my twentieth time standing up here talking about this stuff and I've never had a problem because I don't think there's any reason to have a problem, so.
Can I just ask a format question? I, I love this permanent position justification. I mean, this is like what I'm all about. So is this a format that you developed? Is this a format that was passed down through the state? How did you find, come up with this?
We're dealing directly with the Department of Revenue and I believe that's the format they want to see. Because, yeah.
It's, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, and you know, it's probably not as much detail as sometimes people want to see, but it gets the point across and I'm telling you, every time we've ever needed anything or asked anything, they've been helpful. You know, I, I made the joke about my, all my departments sitting right there. But I'm telling you this, when we need something, we'll call your HR department and they jump to it. You're returning. You know, Sean's sitting over there. Anytime we, if we can do something using your guys, so we don't have to go outside and hire somebody, we do. You know, it's, it's, it's always helpful if we have problems with a building or anything. If I call upstairs and get Heidi on the phone, they, they are always helping us. So we work together well with everybody, you know? They weren't joking. As constitutionals, we get together quite often and if we need something, you know, we work together. If you get on that website we were talking about, you can link straight into Tom's deeds. You know, we got links right to, you know, the tax bills. I mean, it opens it straight up when you look at it. And, you know, and of course, I don't really know what the dang tax collector's doing, but I get all these phone calls asking me questions about tax bills and how to pay them and stuff. So I think they put a link on their website that sends everybody to me. So see, that's a cost savings for them. Yeah, but anyway, so.
I believe we still have an opening for the Value Adjustment Board, if I'm not, we're still advertising for that.
Well, I put my name in, but they wouldn't let me.
That was just a reminder is to keep, everybody keep pushing for people to apply for that opening.
What's the historical submission rate to the VAB? Is it going up? Does it stand pretty flat? It went up the last year. It went up the last year.
Really hasn't gone up, but there's a tax rep. Horrible people and they don't, listen, they file petitions to board on stuff they've never seen before. They don't know why they're filing. They just file and they hope that we'll look at it and figure something out so they can make some money. And what did they file this year?
Fifty two.
Fifty two. One company filed fifty two petitions to Value Adjustment Board. I wish y'all would come and sit through and watch us rip them to pieces. It is the funniest, saddest thing I've ever seen. They, someone did this using some kind of software that doesn't think. It'll use a vacant lot as a comp on a house. It's pathetic. And then whoever's representing it on board who calls in on the phone, starts out by saying, well, you know, I've never seen this before. And then they start trying to defend it. And of course, we have, there's nothing they can find that we don't already have. But that's the only reason it's gone up. It really is normally, we don't have a dozen people that are coming to board every year except for commercialized people that file petitions.
It just seemed like we had a lot last year. We had twenty two actually made it to us, to the Value Adjustment Board. Was it twenty two or was it more than that? It was more than that. It took a while to get through them all, yeah.
But it's just one after the other.
One right after the other because we upheld, yeah, and we upheld all your decisions.
And we really, I mean, it annoys me to no end because you'll notice none of them have an appraisal license.
No.
Because they could get in trouble for the things they're doing. See, if I get up there and lie or do something wrong, they'll take my license away from me. So they have no, nothing keeping them straight. They'll say, do anything they can. If I submitted something like what they submit to us, I'd, I'd get in trouble. And it's, that's why it's more. And it, and it is harder on the Value Adjustment Board. They have to spend more time dealing with it. You know, short of the one guy that comes every year.
The contact box.
My frequent flyer. Every, the rest of this stuff's just a pain, you know?
Alrighty, sir, I think we've gotten everything we can out of you. But as with, as with everybody else, as we go through the process, as we try to narrow our gap, look forward to working with you and our administrative team, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Katie Leonard, Supervisor of Elections. Good afternoon.
All right, so at least I'm not last. It's better than being first, apparently. So, all right. We had, I met with all of you prior to this budget season, so you knew what was coming, probably. The good news is I expected an eight percent increase and my staff and I poured over this budget based on our expenditures for the last presidential election, doing some metrics to figure out what we could potentially save in a, in a primary election. So just so you know, and I know that Pam and Kim, you guys are new. So I don't know if you've noticed, if you look at the, the history of my budget, basically after a presidential year, it will just, it goes down typically. And then when we're heading into a presidential year, it will go up because I have the two elections in one budget. This, this budget is for one election, which is the primary next year. It'll be August eighteenth and you guys know how important primaries are, right? So, but of course, we were looking at a lot of increases. So it was, it was really difficult. But luckily, we were able to go through, pour over it. And my staff and I were able to identify some consolidations of services, either eliminating or consolidating software costs, consolidating mailings. That's really important because a lot of my budget is postage and postage has gone up. They will go up again. They won't tell us how much it is. We have to guess, which is what, you know, budgeting is, is pretty much guessing for a lot of the things. So we went through all of that. And the good news is we were able to, in the face of increases, actually produce a budget that's not much more than the previous one. So I'm less than one half of one percent, which is in, within the margin of recount. And so I'm really proud, actually, to present to you a budget that's not the lowest increase on that list. I didn't know what that list would be, but wow. All right, so the big thing for us, though, was our website vendor. Our current vendor basically said they're not going to host our website anymore. It's too much of liability and risk for them to host elections websites. There were two credible threats going into this presidential election identified by the Department of Homeland Security. That's Russia and China, were targeting Florida elections websites. So the cost for them to maintain and keep up with all the security measures that are required, they're just not going to do that anymore, basically is what they told us. So we had to find a new website vendor and we were just talking, you know, you were just talking with Jay about his website. Our website has a lot of traffic as well. We have a lot of resources there. You can request a vote by mail ballot. You can change your address. You can look up your voter status to see what party affiliation you are, when you registered, all those things. Anything you can do on the phone, you can basically do on our website as well. So that's a big, that was a big increase for us, unfortunately, and it was not something that was predicted. We didn't know that our vendor would just all of a sudden decide not to do elections websites anymore. They have since 2012, so.
A good thing is there are sixty seven other, or sixty six other counties that.
They're in the same boat.
Have in the same boat, so you.
Just about, yeah. Some other, some other counties had moved away from that vendor previously anyway. So, but really the majority, like you're saying, the sixty seven, I'd say sixty counties probably in the state are having to do the same thing we're doing. So aside from those.
Join together.
That, see, that's the thing. We don't want to be in the same boat because the.
Oh, that's true too, that all in the same boat, that would be.
From a security standpoint, you want to diversify as much as you can and not have any of the same vendors for, especially for the website because it is such a big target, right? Yeah. So aside from those increases that were expected, we were able to decrease the budget overall. Which is, I mean, in the areas of like, so there's two different sides of my budget. There's administrative, you'll see that, and there's also elections. So elections decreased about a hundred and forty five thousand, if I remember correctly. But then that, on the admin side, the operations side, with the COLA, the FRS and everything else and that I've described, a lot of our postage budget is administrative, so a lot of that, but there, you'll see that increase there. And you guys have this already in your email, so I'm just kind of just talking about it. Again, really for the formality of it and also for the public's sake and then, of course, to answer your questions. I did want to bring up something really quickly, you know, since the presidential election, we never stopped having elections. We had those two special elections this year for a congressional member. So the, what I had to do in this budget year, because those two elections were countywide and not budgeted for, right? So I asked Heidi and Finance Team if we could have the last two months of our current budget advanced so that we would have the actual money to conduct two countywide elections without any budgeted, you know? We had zero dollars to conduct those, basically. So we took our last two months of the budget year, advanced them forward. We were expecting a reimbursement from the state. That process is moving slowly. When we did our last special election of this, of any comparison that I can think of, really was back in 2015 when I was appointed. That was ten years ago. Strange to say out loud. We did this and our, the reimbursements came pretty quickly. Now, I think that with everything happening with the state budget, I think that could be, there could be a delay. I found out that Palm Beach County had a special election in 2021. They just got reimbursement in January of this year. It was four years later, so.
That's like FEMA delay.
It is a delay. Yeah, so the states were required to pay for that election. When they pay for it is unknown. So we did our reimbursement request and John Brower, our county finance director, has a copy of that. It's required that it goes to the county level, also to the state. And we've been back and forth about some of the expenditures they had questions on. They're doing their own Doge there, right? So we have to provide backup and everything. But I really think there'll be a delay in this budget year. So if it comes to that, I'll have to be standing back here at this podium saying, hey. Probably in about, I would say in August, before, maybe that before the end of July, I'll have a better idea of what will be needed. But as of right now, my last two months of this, of this budget year have already been expended. So I'm already headed, headed into, you know, a potential deficit for this budget year, so. But we will cross that bridge if that bridge needs to be crossed. I won't come to you unless I have to. And that's a total of three hundred and twenty nine thousand, two hundred and forty one dollars. That's how much those two elections cost our county. Elections are expensive. So I'm glad to answer any questions. You can see that the increases were required for hardware and software maintenance, our website. I can go over those in detail as much as you need me to do. There are some things I can't talk about the vendors exactly because those, that information is protected for security reasons. But, I mean, I can go over whatever it is that you might have questions about for this upcoming budget year.
You said something about a primary possibly in August. Is that scheduled already? Is that regularly scheduled?
I'm sorry, for next year. So this year, we don't have any elections scheduled.
Twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, yep.
Not twenty five?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be for?
It's our midterm elections schedule. So there'll be the governor's race. We always have our US rep and state rep on the ballot. They're two-year terms and then, you know, the countywide regular scheduled elections.
So it's going to be a pretty heavy ballot to, and costly. Do you have an estimate of what that might run for that one type of election? Probably similar to what we just went through?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go, six oh nine oh seven three.
I don't have that paper.
That also includes our, that includes our ongoing maintenance and software costs. But I can tell you, I just conducted a countywide election with less turnout and individually, they were, they ran about a hundred and sixty five thousand. So it'll be a little bit more than that.
Okay, just to get an idea of.
Yeah, the primaries, they typically have less turnout, as you probably have noticed. The 2024 primary, we hit twenty nine percent, which is terrible and sad. And I've tried all different ways to encourage turnout, you know, just being really, a, a elections cheerleader, I've tried that, yay, woo-hoo vote. I've also tried shaming people into voting, that maybe one in three people is not good turnout for a primary election that will determine the office on the November ballot. So I have a new, trying, trying a new idea to encourage voter turnout, which is through education, civic education, because some of the questions we get at the office, I think that just because a lot of people who move to this county are from another state or, you know, they're used to elections being a certain way, they don't realize the importance of a primary as much. So just a big voter education campaign is really my focus for this, for this primary, to help people understand why they should vote instead of, you know, instead of skipping it. You should never skip a primary. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Same comments for me as, as we move forward with, and you mentioned, I mean, we were expecting a big drop in this year's budget, so.
Yeah, I guess we were.
But as we move forward, appreciate your, your working with our team to be able to, to meet our goals. Each of us in some way contributing to making sure that we, we meet our board goals. But, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, coming up last, Ms. Shelley Edmondson. Tax collector.
So hi, Shelley Edmondson, tax collector. That sounds weird to say. As many of you know, I was with the tax collector's office for eight years and now I'm the tax collector. So I just got sworn in in January, so this is the first time I'm attending. I do not have a presentation for you because. I do not have a presentation for you, because we don't have a budget yet. Our budget goes directly through the Department of Revenue. We are a fee-based office. Just to give you a little bit of background, I guess, to new commissioners, I realize that you all probably know what we do, but just to say it out loud, we are not just the tax collector, we're also the DMV. And so we are a fee-based office. We collect our funds from all the services that we provide to the county. We have the largest foot traffic that comes into our office. We don't know what our budget's going to be just yet. We're working on it. And the fees that we collect just from the county would be the commissions. I know you asked a question earlier, what do you mean? So we get 2%. Whatever, whatever it is, the taxes that you guys are assessing, our fee to collect those taxes and distribute to the, to the other agencies or the taxing districts, we get to keep 2%. We also receive revenue from the DMV side of the house that we do. We do concealed weapons, we do birth certificates, there's hunting and fishing, we do, we do lots of other services besides just collecting your property taxes. And so with that being said, any unspent revenue that we have collected, we do give back to the county each year. We're not allowed to keep it.
And the bed tax?
Yes, we do. We also do the TDT tax. We started doing that in 2018. I was part of that program when we got it off the ground and running. We took that from Department of Revenue, and now we do collect it in-house. I know several of you have been on the TDC board with us, and it's a great program. We collect almost a little over $4.5 million this year in, in TDT taxes for the county. So, yeah.
It's a great report. Everybody should see it, and they'll learn a little bit about how that whole process works and all the work you do for, and checking on, and tracking them down.
Yes, yes, because we don't just collect, but we're actually auditing, we're enforcing. So yeah, we're bulldogs.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay. All of these, I can't think what, VROBs and, you know, short-term rentals. How are they, are you the monitor? Are you the investigator? Are you the detective?
Yes, 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 yes.
Solely?
Yes.
You're not in conjunction with any other organization or group?
Um, well, like, um, yes and no. You know, there's state requirements, there's county requirements, they're supposed to have a local business tax receipt, they're supposed to register with the state for their dwelling, for inspections and that sort of thing. So kind of what we do, we also do local business tax receipts for you guys.
Right.
So what we do is twofold with tourist tax. One, if you're going to have a short-term rental in Flagler County, you have to get a local business tax receipt. With that, that's where we make sure you're compliant on all of those things that you need, whether it's the dwelling license, your sales tax, registered with the Department of Revenue, all those things. The second thing you have to do is register to pay your tourist tax. And tourist tax is confidential, so we have a lot of people anonymous reporting, you know, my neighbor has six different cars in a week in the driveway, and they're not paying tourist tax. Why? I really can't confirm or deny whether they're paying, because that, that information's confidential. But we can look to see if they have a business tax. And our ordinance states that they must have both.
Thank you. That's always something in my mind, that since we've made it legal, are we getting our fair share of what we should be getting?
Yes. So we also, we also have a, a third-party vendor that we pay to scour the internet. So there's a lot of folks that have Airbnbs, VRBOs, all those things, and they put their ads up during the night, when they think we're not working. They put them up at night when people are shopping for their vacations, and then they take them down during the day, because they think we're going to come into work and we're not, we're going to look for it and can't find it. So we actually hire a third-party vendor who scours the internet 24/7 and takes screenshots, snapshots of those ads. So we can, we can actually see when they're up, when they're down, and, and we can see the trend and when they're doing that, so. We run reports, we're finding them. In fact, one of our team members today is out posting notices on doors. I think there's about four or five today, and a couple tomorrow, tomorrow, in Flagler Beach or the hammock somewhere, so. Any other questions?
All right. Well, again, thank you. Please have an open door as we continue working to get this budget in line. And, and join the group that is Doxing, is what we ask, so thank you.
I concur with what they all say. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
All right, all right. That is it for all the presentations. Ms. Petito, did you need any direction from us moving forward on this right now?
Not necessarily today, although we are holding some dates. We have some apparent scheduling conflicts. I know we've got quite a few workshops and meetings scheduled for next week that we're probably going to have to take a look at. When staff is reviewing meeting calendars, they look at availability of blocks of time. It appears that maybe not everybody's schedule was populating, so that we now have some overscheduling. So we're probably going to have to have a brief discussion today, just to kind of work through that, but nothing related to the budget.
Okay. But the, at least on my comments about making, getting this budget finalized this year, am I on base with the discussion that we've got $2.8 million gap to close if we're going to do a flat budget?
That's correct, yeah. That's the 2.8 that's going to have to somehow be worked out. This doesn't take into account any decisions related to some of the other infrastructure needs, whether it's roads, stormwater, beaches, so.
Okay.
Just looking at this.
All right, so that's, that's top level right now, as we move forward.
I have a kind of a comment. It's not going to be popular. It never is popular. I understand this cost of living thing. I understand government. I understand that it's, it's, it's just a practice that has gone on and on and on for decades. We were successful, and other governments are successful in switching from COLA to a merit-based, and it looks like the sheriff has a hybrid type of a compensation package where I would, I would assume the COLA is under contract with, I keep losing that word, what, a union, under a union contract, but I, I can't speak to that, I'm not positive. And then you have the merit on top. In, in the, in the private sector, a 4% every year, every year, every year, every year, every year, without looking at small, so you have a low, a medium, and a high level for each position. These are all, this is all public data. You compare it to other communities, other counties like yourself. It's all, it's all based on merit. There's no COLA. I believe it's in the administrative policy, or somewhere in our policy, where we state COLA. When I asked the Budget Department about COLA, they told me that it was handed down by the state, that they really don't have a calculation on how it's determined. In Flagler Beach, I keep going back there. In the bad times, we didn't even do COLA. We have done 1.9% COLA. We've, there's all kinds of different options on that. But it is more than evident, from sitting up here and looking at what I have, that these expenditures are 80% tied to personnel. So hopefully, in this workshop that we have coming up, and the reason I point to Jay's, Jay Gardner's very thorough budget, is because he justifies depart, he justifies positions. And I think that our county should be moving towards a position justification, a work-study type, instead of going across the board and everybody in this room is looking at population growth equals new people, except for Jay Gardner. So we, we need to, we need to take a look. If that, that is the number-one impact on our budget, is personnel, we need to get innovative, we need to get efficient, and we need to come up with a system that can prove the positions are needed, when they're needed. Costs, salary, a salary, salary range. I know it's a difficult process, but there are subject matter experts out there that can help us get through this. But merit would require an evaluation, somebody that's not meeting standards does not get a raise, somebody who exceeds standards gets a better-than-three-or-four percent raise. It's a, it's a philosophy, it's a different way of doing things, but there's no doubt in my mind that our county needs to be moving towards something that's a little bit more efficient than just awarding everybody 4%. I don't know how long it's been 4%. I know it's been for the last three years, and boy, would I like a 12% increase. I understand the retention thing. However, being one of the biggest employers in this, in this county, it, I think we need to move into the 21st century and, and try to look at some of these costs as it relates to personnel. Insurance-wise, I asked some question, questions about the insurance program. It looks as though it's too late this year to do any, any deep diving into it. That decision was ba, was made years ago. The same theory probably doesn't hold today, that it, like it did back then. I think that needs to be looked at for next year. And so I don't know, again, not having sat through this before, if some of those options or some of those ideas are going to be thrown back out at us. It's probably too late for this year, so giving direction for next year, I don't know. But this 2.880171 is going to be a huge bite. So, having said that, I'm a little bit disappointed, not surprised, but disappointed. And if everyone loves everything they have at the level they have, that's great, they're going to pay for it, because the, the numbers can't keep going up at this, at this rate. They just can't. Those are my, that's comments.
Anybody else with some comments?
I'll just talk about Medicare for a second, because you start off at Medicare and you're at one price, if you're not taking the advantage. And maybe that, none of you in here are in Medicare, but I am. I didn't take the insurance policy, because I felt that I'd be paying for it either way. But you have that one price, and then you have a supplement price, and then you have your medicine price. So I'm spending $400 a month on insurance, just to cover me in the event that anything should happen. And most of the people out there, when you talk about, all these people that are retired people that are also living on Medicare, some are paying the free one and taking their, they're rolling the dice, and then there's those of us who try to prevent serious financial disaster in the healthcare. We all know healthcare has skyrocketed, so I don't, you know, necessarily agree or disagree, but I think we're, we're losing money on the insurance, from what I'm seeing. And that's costly for everybody, including what we're collecting. So I don't know what the answers are. I'm not going to even play that game on TV. But I just want you to know that the, a lot of our residents who are retired have both programs. Some have some, some have others. And it is extremely costly. I can just tell you, a family member was in the hospital up north, and 11 days, and it's well over a million dollars. So those people who think it's free, it's not free, and it's costly, and it's costing us all money. So we really have to sort of look at that, because it appears like we're self-employed, self-insured, and I, I think that might be time for changes in that direction, if it would do some kind of coverage and would get better advantages for our staff and, and our associates. That's just my opinion, but since we're talking about money, that, it looks like a lot of money going out for that, and I think we could do better, and that's just my opinion. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hanson, anything?
No, sir.
All right. There's a few things, Commissioner Carney, what you said, I'm not going to go point, counterpoint. I think it's best if we bring that at a workshop to address how we get to COLA. It's not always been 4%. It goes up and down with cost of living, but it's better to be adequately presented and, by staff, as, as how they've gone through insurance and COLA and everything in the past.
Well, it's determined by the state. I mean, it, it's fine that we use what the state gives us. I'm fine with that.
It's not mandated by the state. We're using the state's guidance in that part. We have discretion in COLA, but we know the state is setting a, a bar, if you will, on how they're treating statewide employees. So it is guidance for us in how our employees are, one, kind of looking at the state as, as an example. But our COLA is adjustable, we, we look at the different cost of living parameters. So it's, it's not a guarantee. And, and as we go through this, it's, it's, it's a variable. It's one of the things that we'll, we'll have to be, all of us will be looking at. I don't think any of the constitutionals want to come up and talk about COLA.
Based on inflation.
Right. That was Mr. Gardner saying it's based on inflation, because we can't hear you.
Missed a point. For, was it eight years? People at work, for me, got nothing for eight years during the downturn, not a penny. No raises, I mean, it was, if it was the hospital, you didn't make it. So, so it is, it is something, and of course, my office, and I believe the other constitutionals probably sit around to wait to see what you all do, and then we're going to take your guidance, and we'll use what you say. I mean.
Right.
But it, it's been 4% a couple of years here, I guess, but it was other numbers quite often. It was 2% or whatever it was. And merits, to me, is the problem area, because if you say merit, and one time I remember, and this was before anybody in this room, it was 4% COLA and 3% merit. Guess what? Everybody got 7%. And it didn't merit.
And I'm not going to put words in, in the sheriff's mouth, but I think, as you heard him, he says those merits aren't given until they reach employment milestones. So it's based on milestones, not, right.
Yeah, the merit system works just like the fitness support system. You know, it, it gets pushed to the right. Everybody's a, everybody's a 4-0, everybody's a 4-0. And the merit system, as Jay said, that's what happens. Everybody gets the merit. So, yeah, I'm, I'm against going that.
All right, good conversation. Couple other things we need to address. Mr. Moylan, you wanted consensus on an item. Did you want to talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We became aware late last week that the city of Benel this evening has a rezoning on its agenda to authorize up to 8,000 residences. There has not been a great deal of coordination between the city and the county. There will be impacts to county roads, and of course, we are their fire department. Stormwater's a concern, this is at the head. This is at the headwaters of Haw Creek. And so I wanted to see if the board would like Mr. Mangle and I to attend the meeting and to, to voice our concerns.
It would be consistent with what Mr. Moylan has done with Veranda Bay.
What are they zoning? I mean, I, I'm so sorry, that's a stupid question. I know where they're zoning. They're going from what to what?
It's mostly ag and conservation presently. It's very low lying land, very wet. And they're going from that to a mixed use, mostly residential, there is some commercial. It's, it's vast, I believe it's, I don't want to get the acreage wrong, several thousand acres. About half of it is wetlands. And they're going to develop the upland part, mostly residential with some commercial.
Some people have emailed me and says that to stop the tank farm, that's, that's what they're going to do. And I haven't seen anything that says they're going to do the tank farm.
Well, that's a, that's a separate item. So you have the 1,800 acre property owner looking to go industrial. That's a whole separate item. This is the reserve at Haw Creek, a planned unit development that I, as I say, authorizes up to 8,000 residences. We did, just a little bit more background, they had their transmittal hearing on the land use side, that's the comp plan side. They did the first hearing. And Mr. Mangle submitted a correspondence to them in response. That was our appropriate time to comment. And they haven't implemented any of our suggestions or initiated any sort of conversation with us. And we saw it pop up on their agenda, and so we wanted to make sure the board was okay with us appearing there and saying, hey, can you take a look at our concerns? And, you know, we, for example, just, there's, there's a lot of examples, but when it comes to fire, for example, the owner is proposing to donate four acres of land to the city for safety. So it's fire, police, and city offices. Whereas a development of that size, we would ask for a full five acres just for fire. And, you know, there's no, there's no money involved either toward fire. And, you know, just having the land isn't going to be enough. We're going to have to build another fire station to keep our ISO ratings and everybody's insurance where it's at. Now, of course, this happens over time, but these are the sort of conversations you want to have on the front end. This is a very large development that does not read like a development normally would of this size. It's like a DRI sized development, but it does not have the DRI type exactions. Our concern is that, you know, a small town like Benel looking to grow, looking to move into the future, just could get sort of taken advantage of and run over by this.
Can we specify that the developer has to pay for a fire station?
Yeah, this is the time to do that.
That was, that would be a must, I would think. It'd be a must, must have.
Then this is the time to do it because once it's authorized, you have, you know, they'll have much less leverage. They'll, they'll be sort of in a defensive posture because the developer will say, hey, I have these vested rights, and now you're trying to hold me up with exactions after the fact.
So the owner is going for the zoning change?
Well, there is a developer out of Jacksonville who has contracted with the landowner. And so that-
Contracted to buy it?
Uh, well, we don't know the exact arrangement. The, the developer out of Jacksonville is trying to get the rights vested. And we assume at that point they will sell it off either as a whole thing or in parts. The, the one who's getting the development rights is very likely not to be the one who would actually have to make it happen.
But, but Benel can tell, through that process, Benel can tell them what they want?
Yes, absolutely. And this is the time to do it.
Yeah, they need to set those standards pretty high right now so that they can get it down the road, they can get a better end product.
I would think we'd have provisions for a school, have provisions for a fire department, have provisions for a police department, outstation, all, all built in, should be built into the, that they must do.
Could that be have a special taxing district for that?
Well, that would, that would have to involve the city. These are conversations we haven't had, they haven't engaged.
Who's the attorney on this?
Can't our county do some kind of taxing district? No?
Well, it's within their jurisdiction, so they would have to agree to it, similar to what the sheriff was saying earlier with Palm Coast. The, the city does contract out their legal services to the Voe's Law Firm. They've been with them for a very long time. And they're great, great lawyers.
This is the reason we had the conversation about getting these development-
Joint planning agreements?
Yeah. I mean, it's, right, we, the city of Benel gets the impact fees for roads, but they're dumping all their traffic on roads that we maintain. How is the fire, a question on there, are in a local with them on fire? I guess we probably all should get a copy of that agreement. Because I'm concerned if it's, if it's, if it wasn't static, which was, right, I remember when we did it, it was a swap for building and service. I don't know how it addresses growth.
Well, it doesn't, it, it didn't anticipate something of this magnitude. And it basically says that we agree to maintain the, the same level of service they had when they were doing it themselves. And that, that's all well and good when you're, you know, just growing incrementally, but when you have-
That's based on a population threshold then, when it was written.
Right.
A level of service, I don't, I can't imagine it applies as they grow, that we are responsible without having any authority to weigh in on the agreement.
As I remember, the agreement doesn't anticipate large developments. It can be amended, obviously.
Right.
And, and it probably needs to be.
Right. I think that would be a, a high priority on this as, as we move, and this is the, this is, if I'm not mistaken, this is the development agreement that is being reviewed tonight. There's two different items. And you typically, the development agreement is like the PUD, it's the-
That's correct.
It's where everything is, is ironed out.
Right.
So if, if we don't have what we think is in there, we need my opinion, hopefully everybody agrees, we get, we get to state those publicly at the meeting. Whether they confine you to three minutes again, I would hope they would give you a little leeway.
I would, I would think so. I would hope so.
Right.
And has Adam been in communication with their planner through this whole process?
Yes, as I say, he sent a very thorough correspondence, so it was all documented, you know, our concerns, what the sorts of things we'd like to see in the development agreement. And, and he did it at the appropriate time, which is in response to their, their transmittal of their comp plan change. This latest, the, the agenda tonight, it just got published. We didn't know it was coming until it was published.
But with no response?
Right.
So how long did we wait for a response?
This has been lingering so, the letter went out, I believe it was in November, and then in January, they had their first hearing, and then nothing has happened since January until the agenda got published last week.
Well, I, I did go to one of the meet, I'm on their mailing list. I went to a meeting and a, a fight broke out, a physical fight. People got arrested at this, at this event, so I didn't go back.
On, on this item?
On this item.
Wow.
Oh, it was, it's been going on for a long time. This is not, you know, this is not new. But there's no system in place so that when we don't get a response, we don't do a little, like, hey, we're, we're here, we're waiting for your response. There's no timeline, there's no-
I don't know if, I don't know if there's been any-
Could we have your response before, blah, blah, blah?
Mr. Mangle's not here. I don't know if there's been any phone calls or anything since that time, I'm not aware.
Okay.
I think the appropriateness is, is that, is not to proceed with something as important as the development agreement without having addressed the county's concerns.
But if they ignore our request, we, we have no recourse because we didn't go back and say, we're in, we're into this now three months, where are you with this project? These meetings have been very, now, the meetings are the anti-development meetings. It's the, the people, the, the people that live in Benel that do not want this. There have been regular meetings going on. And they had public meetings with the developer, quote unquote, developer. So it's been out there. I don't know why they're not responding, so. Right, basically, basically.
Yeah. And you know, with our new comprehensive plan, our, the county's comprehensive plan, we are, we are calling for these joint committees so that there can be better coordination. And we hope that they will take us up on that. Because, you know, in the end, it's, it's really the public, it, it's going to affect county residents, city residents, it, it's going to affect all of us.
If you could just vocalize a consensus, Commissioner Richardson.
Don't they, don't they have their own fire department?
No, they don't actually.
Benel does not?
We are their fire department.
We're their fire department. We're their fire department.
I thought they had a separate division, I guess.
At one point in time, they had a fire department, but they no longer do. Oh, there he is.
Oh, here's my hero to rescue me.
I had a Mangle Growth Management Director.
Did you run?
No, not at all. In comp plan land, things are a little different, that you have timeframes. And so that when you go through the transmittal phase, you do the transmittal, all the reviewing agencies come back with their comments, and then you have a certain amount of time, I can never quote correctly, for adoption. So there should be some, still some talking back and forth, but sometimes there isn't. Sometimes it's just how it works. It's on the obligation of the applicant owner to address the comments from all the agencies. And then we have the prerogative of, as making comments on those, on that comp plan amendment, that if it's adopted and the, the city, whoever adopts it, but the city in this case, hasn't addressed our comments, we can go, go through a, a process. It's not necessarily a lawsuit, but it's lawsuit-like, and it goes through the Florida Land and Water Adjudicatory Commission, big word for governor and I think most of the cabinet. And so you go through, and it's a, it's a land use mediation process, basically. And, and it's a, it's an alternative to, to court, but it mainly gets you to where, you know, here's the things that we identified as the issues, here's the things that you addressed, here's the things that you didn't. And so that's kind of how it's set up.
Does that sort of slow the process down a little bit too? Delay it?
Yes, that, that Florida Land and Water, so it's in the best interest of the owner and, and the folks who are adopting it, to come back and say, hey, this is what we're, what we're looking at doing. And we haven't had that, I, I don't want to by any means fault the city, this isn't exactly a, an, an odd situation. Usually you do have some, some kind of go-between, but to, to not have any communication isn't totally unusual, it happens. You know, they've probably got enough other comments to worry about anyway.
You know, where they, they're located and so forth, and where the company is, I, I get that, but there's still a, a time, time-sensitive situation, and that's where we have to step in at this point, right?
We, we are definitely looking for your direction. And, and what I think is happening with this, and hadn't had my communication either with my counterparts at the city, but what I think the plan is, because of the first reading tonight on the rezoning and on the PUD, then what I think will happen at a very soon future meeting will be that you'll have the adoption of the comp plan amendment show up on, on an agenda. And then on that same agenda, you'll have the second reading on the rezoning, and then the second reading on the PUD, which will be how I would do it.
Okay.
And so I think this is their chance to get the comments on the, the rezoning and the PUD. And then if it was me, come back and see what I need to do to the land use to make everything all gel together.
Get work.
And hopefully that's going to work.
Okay, thanks Anna.
Okay, so is there consensus, Ms. Richardson?
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, we ought to do this.
Correct. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, another item, Ms. Petito, did we need to go over the schedule, upcoming meetings?
We need to look at the calendar for Monday, the 16th. We had a tentative workshop for the beach only from nine until noon. There seems to be a conflict perhaps with somebody's schedule, so we were looking at if there was consensus to move that to Tuesday, the 17th, from nine till noon. We've already checked with some of the consultants that are able to attend. We have a regular budget workshop on Monday, the 16th, from one to three. And that was to talk about the general fund budget, but it makes sense to have the beach discussion prior to the general fund, or we can at least present the general fund budget. We were also scheduled to come back to talk about animal control on the 16th. And then you have your evening meeting, regular meeting at five on the 16th. We're trying to target the 17th, if possible, to move one of these workshop items. The following week, on the 23rd, we do have a tentative hold on Monday at one o'clock for another workshop. And then from June 24th through the 27th, we've got the Florida Association of Counties.
I guess with those three items, we're talking about three separate discussions, so what's the number one priority?
For that day? Could we do, could we do the beach at the one o'clock? And then do the budget on the 17th?
We could move them around, yeah, we could do, I just have to check with the consultant to see if they can make the one o'clock on Monday. They were scheduled for the morning, so I don't know if there was-
Who's, who's the consultant?
You have two of them. You have Foth, and then you have, can't think of the other name of it.
Moffett, part of it? Is Moffett part of it?
Moffett and Nickel is one, and then the other one is Chris Creed, who used to be with Olson, who's now with Foth.
Oh, okay.
So we have those two that we had already confirmed Monday morning, we checked with them on Tuesday morning.
All right, well, just do-
What's the, which is, which part of Monday is, is the problem?
Monday.
Yeah, I know, that's what I said.
If you talk about my comment, it was Monday morning, but I can, I, I don't want to do three workshops in one day. We're going to be here from nine AM till nine PM.
There's not much, I mean, it's, it's a lot.
It is. And it didn't show up, and I've already talked to staff about, and I've already had my computer fixed from it not showing up, because this one never showed up. So I think I'm fixed, I just-
Then we won't talk about the animals.
The 17th would be budget, I'm sorry, Heidi, the budget at, on the 17th?
We could do either or. The consultant has already been made aware of either a morning meeting, so from nine to noon, whether it's Monday or Tuesday, we know the consultant can do it.
Okay.
If we want it to-
But you, but you want the budget after the beach, so it makes sense to do the beach on Monday and the budget on Tuesday.
And that's fine, we can do that. It would be the 17th.
Yeah, that's fine. We're just going to have to give it up, that's all. 16th. And what, and Leanne has another job, and she's not here. She, she can't workshop her life either, but, I mean, I'll say yes for me, but I, I got to be out of here by noon. And I'd like to see if Leanne's work schedule will let her do back-to-back days. I don't want to speak for Leanne.
I'm good either day, I just have to check one appointment on Tuesday, which I can do immediately after, but I'm, I'm not able to check it from here. Because after the 18th, I won't be able to be in person, so.
Right? We had two other items. We had the beach Monday morning-
At nine.
At nine, right, till 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we had a budget.
Yeah, the budget we're going to do on Tuesday is suggested, right? Tuesday morning.
That'll give us the afternoon open until the meeting at night.
Right.
Okay, I'm good.
That would give us a break on Monday, and then it would start again at five o'clock.
To you, Mr. Hanson.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with even doing all three in one day, I don't have a problem with that. But, um, yeah, the only thing Tuesday that looks on the schedule, I see the Margaritaville Hotel tour.
Right, we're going to have to give it up.
We could give that up, that's not a problem.
That's not required.
We'll get our own special tour later.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll tell them, we get a makeup day, like they say in, in seventh grade. Yeah, we'll get over there when-
Tell them to contact Lucy and get it on our schedule.
Yeah, Lucy, I'm sure Lucy will find it.
And again, I think it's all pending Ms. Pennington's-
Right.
-work schedule, but-
And me clearing one.
And me clearing one.
And me clearing one, yeah.
So the five o'clock on Monday doesn't work for the two of you possibly?
Five o'clock, we have to have.
That's our business meeting.
That's our business meeting.
Yeah, we can't change that.
That's like, not this. It's not a workshop, it's votes.
Right.
It's not discussions, it's just votes. Okay.
And then we'd have to move that one o'clock, which is slated for budget-
To Tuesday.
To Tuesday at nine o'clock.
So we can go home and have lunch and come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or do the meeting that we can't do the next day.
Okay, I had that down as a B O C C, but I wasn't sure. Okay. So when do we dog it? I mean, the, the animal shelter?
We were planning on bringing back the animal shelter, animal control discussion with the general fund budget, but if it's too much for Tuesday from nine to noon, we could pick up the 23rd at one o'clock as a, more than likely, you'll probably have something else on that meeting besides animal control.
It's okay to have, it's, it's okay with me to have one item on the meeting. I think we do enough discussion on it to beat each other up long enough.
We've got the 23rd, at least on the calendar penciled in.
We do, we have it in. We had that in before. I've got it down there, so.
I'm good with that.
Dogs.
Okay, so just to recap, the workshop on the beach will still take place on Monday, the 16th, from nine until noon. The board workshop on the general fund budget will move from Monday, the 16th, at one, and it will now be Tuesday, the 17th, from nine until noon. And then you still have your regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday, the 16th, at five. Animal control will be moved to the Monday, June 23rd, one o'clock workshop.
So I have a quick question. If Ms. Pennington can't be here, can she do it on, do we have where, an opportunity for her to, what's it called, on the computer? Thank you, Zoom, or, or call, you know, reach in through Face Teams or something like that?
You would have to override your own rules. This commission has sort of self-imposed a rule against that absent a state of emergency by the governor.
I, I don't know what to say about that. I, I was, the governor put us in that position.
No, 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 we did that to ourselves. Yes.
And when was that done?
Was it the last time around or the one before? It was somewhat recent, the update to the rules of procedure. You can always override it, they're your rules.
What was the, which, are we talking about?
Remote.
Like, for instance, if somebody can't be here when we're doing this, it's a workshop anyway, right? So it's not being voted on, it's just being discussed.
Right.
The vote isn't until that night at five o'clock. That's the only vote.
That's true.
In all that we've discussed today, right? Am I crazy?
No.
Okay, good, yes. I got consensus that I'm not crazy? No, okay. So, I, so then I guess it's not relevant to this issue.
That's true.
And if they can be input, great, or they can write something of input or whatever and send it along, I guess, or whatever. Right? That could be done too. Could somebody, like, you know, if you can't be here, I'm just, I'm just looking at long-term thoughts here, because everybody's got a world going on right now. Can you write, let's say I had a, I could not be here like I was that time, I was ill, if I could type something out and, and email it ahead to Heidi, or to you, Sean, or somebody in the administration to read on my behalf of what I have to say, and that would be it. Is that, is that against our rules too?
Those, those are one-way communications can be sent to each commissioner as well, as long as there's not a, a conversation. If you're stating an opinion, you can do that one way by email, so people know your opinion.
My opinion is this and that, and that's it. Okay. Just want to make sure that we can get the communication for everybody.
And, and just, you know, no reply, this is a one-way communication.
Yeah, I've learned that sometimes, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
And if by chance, I don't know if Commissioner Pennington can do the Tuesday, the 17th, the other option might be to move the general fund with the animals on the 23rd, if there's an appetite for that. I don't know.
I guess we can play, that's another choice.
That's a backup.
That's choice number two.
That's a backup.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure everybody has an opportunity, and it's been a little wanky.
All right.
Thank you.
Before we, was there anything else we needed to address?
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Before we go to public comment, did anybody have any closing comments up here on the dais?
No.
Okay. At this time, we'll go for public comment. If there's anybody in the public that wants to speak to the commission. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
For three minutes.
Good thing I don't have to vacuum it. My name's Denise Calderwood, and I'm a Palm Coast resident, finally back in Flagler County. This is just a point of contention, and I think I can save you several million dollars. Your Human Services Division is not doing their job and not doing it effectively, and they've proven time and time again the last six years. And I hate to tell you this, but six years ago, I defended them and kept them here by having people in the community and basically saying we needed to have them. But by mandate, you're only required to provide two services, I believe. And you're, you know, Heidi could tell you what those two services are, right? Indigent care and something else. I can't remember the other one right offhand that's under that division. And I'm sorry, because I wasn't planning on it, but the City of Benell today just served a notice to two homeless people in Benell, telling them that if they don't vacate their, their camps by Friday, they are going to get arrested. And they are willing to get arrested because they have no place to go. They've been on outreach. One of them is a disabled adult, 60 years old, lifelong resident of Flagler County. She's on the housing waiting list, has been, she was number one prioritized. She gets $997 a month on social security disability, okay? And so she's forced to move and find a place to go, and there is no place for her to go. The Rock Transformation Center doesn't allow them to be hanging out there now, and that stopped because of the county putting their senior services, while we say it's a senior center, of course, it's not, their congregate meal site there, and we're paying the, you know, them $9,000 a month for that location. You also have your adult congregate Alzheimer's unit. Sorry, this is all unprepared, because, you know, before coming in here, I just got two of the phone calls for people who are very, very upset, saying where are they going to go, what are they going to do? And as far as I know, the county hasn't had any long-term, short-term planning, except for the fact that Human Services is going to be moving over to the library, you know, and, and, you know, we're going to have that issue again, like we did behind the library, you know, where the homeless, and we had to pay, you know, for security, you know, at the library. So this is a big, complicated issue. You have people who wound up having a resource fair, and it was advertised, well-advertised that they were going to be there till four o'clock, and I got there at 3:15, and they were all packed up and ready to go. There were two people who got out of their car at quarter of 4:20 or 4:00, saying that they couldn't get rides, they had to borrow rides, and there was nobody there to assist them. And county staff, you know, refused to, to stay and talk to them, you know? And I filed a complaint, and I spoke to them about it, and they said they can always just go to our office. And I said, you heard this gentleman say that. The response I got back from the director of the program is, is we can't hold the providers accountable. I said, yes, you can, because they're contracted accounting, contracts. Thank you. It's a very complex issue. The point is, you have people who are not necessarily doing their job and leaving early, and not being there, and being responsive to the needs.
Thank you.
And my phone number, please feel free to reach out, and I'll give you all the information in the document.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Denise. Actually reminded me of a point that we do need to discuss, I guess, as we move forward in the budget, and we're massaging this, maybe not even for this year, but in the future. In HHS, we have some requirements and some things that are not absolutely required from the county. And I, I don't know, I've had discussions with Ms. Petito. I think everybody at some point has had discussions about HHS. So those things that, if you want, I know she's looking for guidance from us to be able to do some changes in HHS. I don't want to, I don't know exactly what to say other than there are some things, some efficiencies that can be had if we give her the, the authority to go in there and, and change some things that have been handled in the past. Is, is that a good summary?
I think it is. I think we were looking for a direction to move some of the current funding, the way it's funded, more to competitive grants, where we would offer grants to some nonprofit entities to provide services, transitioning it more to what seems like annual allocation to more performance-based, where we have contracts and we're, they're competing, and so that there's some more level of expectation. I think the last time we met, we were looking for direction to come back to the board with a grant program, an application, and what that would look like. And then we were also looking for guidance to shift some of the programs that are being handled internally to potentially opening it up to also competitively bid. But maybe some of those programs would receive more service in home rather than through personnel, so.
Okay. I mean, I think there's some, some efficiencies that can be had, and, and I think if you're looking for direction up here, to be able to bring some things back to us, I would, I would be for that.
I think any, we're, this is the time that, that we have to get a handle on this. So I, I'm not looking to, to pick at one certain line item or one certain department. I would like to see an overall budget. If, if, the procedure has to be followed in each department. So if there's efficiencies, or cost savings, or cuts, that's an ugly word, but whatever it is, if it can happen, it needs to be looked at, whether we want to or not, you know? It's, we, if we haven't, if we don't do it over and over again and keep doing it over and over again, then we're, we're the crazy ones, because things change, situations change. And it's, it's time. So I just, whatever Ms. Petito's processes for evaluating her departments, then she needs to bring every option forward.
I think the point was, this has been historically a service provided by the county, so these are things that she wanted clarity from us to be able, to be able to make some of those changes.
If, if a service is no longer efficient, yes, we have to look at it. I pulled my numbers on this department. I, I know what the numbers are.
Mr. Hanson? We're looking for consensus. Okay, say yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ri- Richardson?
Since I missed a, a portion of this, and I didn't have my FaceTime on, what, what was, what is the-
Say yes.
Concess, consensus to, boy.
We have three, but anyway, where Ms. Petito was looking for us to give her authority to do a review of, within HHS specifically, some historical, things we've historically done, kind of, we call legacy things, I guess, some programs that-
Current direction it's been in and so forth, where it was started and where it's going.
Some of the stuff I can look at in other departments. That's why the focus is really on HHS. And I can come back and give you an idea of what some of the recommendations that I would have built into my budget, but they're more an administrative decision. What I'm looking for from the board is more of a policy decision, because the board has supported a lot of these programs consistently over a period of time. So what we're looking to do is come back with a different way of offering the same service, but it may be a little bit different.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, one last call. If there's anybody for public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back, and take a motion to adjourn.
Move, adjourn.
Thank you.
We don't need a second, apparently. When we adjourn, we just adjourn. You're going to get spanked for adjourning.